Welcome to the October 8th School Board Meeting. Let's start with the pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I believe we do have some revisions to the agenda.
I think we are good.
I thought we had a few things in non-public that were going to be in public.
Yeah. I think Michelle is right. We have that conversation before in public.
That's what I'm referring to, the board member opening.
Yeah, that one.
I already moved that into public.
Is it? Okay. Let's see the change. All right. With that, then, summary of non-public actions from October 1, 2014, non-public session. Mr. Barker made a motion to approve non-public minutes of September 24, 2014, as written. Mr. Lepore II, the motion carried 301, with Mr. York abstaining. Mr. Barker made a motion to direct the chair to finalize the details on a new two-year contract with the superintendent, Mr. Lepore II. The motion carried 400. Shall I bring us to Presentations/Recognitions?
This evening? Well, actually, in Presentations/Recognitions, we have a high school group coming back to talk to us about J.I.C.A.
Excellent.
And that's it.
We're going to J.I.C.A. now.
First, I'd like to apologize in advance. Just got a football, so casual tire.
On the end of that one.
I'm in casual tire, just got a football, so.
May want to pull a chair up.
So first, I'd like to present this plaque for, we got ranked number 142 out of 15,000 by Newsweek.com for our high schools. So I should present that to you. We don't have a place to find a pain right now, but we will find a place, so there's that. And we just have to thank you guys all together for giving us a voice, and you know, this happens for a reason. We're straight schools, so.
Okay, so the other reason why we're here tonight is we are both representatives for the dress code committee. So just a brief history on what has kind of been going on with the dress code. In the fall of 2013, the 2013-2014 previous president and vice president of the Campbell High School Student Council met with the student council to discuss our ideas on the dress code. Should it be revised? Did we think it was okay? Did it pertain to Campbell? Did we think everyone, as a school as a whole, was okay with it? So we gave our suggestions, and those suggestions were then taken to administration and went from there. At the beginning of this year, we did have some drawback. There was some media pages made in regards to the dress code. So the dress code committee was made to kind of sit down, talk with a variety of students, student council members, non-student council members, males, females, everyone from every group in the Campbell High School community as a whole. And we discussed the dress code again. We went through it step by step, basically thought out the issues, if anyone had any issues, what we thought was right and wrong.
And this past Monday, October 7th, the Dress Code Committee, that's just been known and come to name, consisting both of males and females, student council members and non-student council members, Mrs. Freeman and Mrs. Lepore, which thank you for coming. We met and we just discussed the dress code, and we came to a conclusion leggings are appropriate as long as they are paired with a long sweater and basically just as long as they're covered. And it's basically just discussed in Section 8 under the dress code policy in the student handbook. And then there's also a discussion of leggings and yoga pants in Section Number 10 under the dress code policy. And it basically discusses shorts and skirts. It must be mid-thigh length, so we agreed among that. And we just kind of clarified the dress code policy for students. We plan to take pictures of a mannequin with like the appropriate, you know, whether it be shorts, what am I saying, shorts or skirts. So we're trying to like post that up on the internet or the website.
So if there's any, if anyone has any questions, whether like their outfit, which may include leggings, lyrical wear, yoga pants, anything, or skirts, if they're in question, if they're too short, if they look inappropriate, they can go there as opposed to risking it coming into school and like possibly getting spoken to.
So you guys thought the dress code as it is written is fine, and that's just kind of a communication issue, I guess?
Yeah, we thought, there's a section which discusses that like all butt extra-denitalia and like private regions have to be covered. And then there was this, in Section 8, it says, so that would be Section 8. And then I believe there is the new paragraph added under the school district policy. It says that form-fitting garments, jeggings, yoga pants, running tights, and tank tops with straps in with, so the miscommunication between students, like I believe, is that students weren't making the connection that they can wear the yoga pants and leggings as long as it's paired with the top that covers the regions discussed in Section 8. So that's kind of what we agreed to, that that is fair. Students can still be comfortable and wear the things in fashion right now, but still be covered and abide by the policy. So we just thought that it would just need some clarification by that.
And then like for reprimanding the, like if they violate the dress code, we're planning on emailing Nurse Baker instead of calling them down to the nurse's office, which I guess was an issue because everyone knew that if you recall down the nurse's office that you were violating the dress code. So we kind of changed that. We just said, basically, the kids would get called down to the main office, and then from there, the main office people would just send them to the nurse's office. So it's kind of more private and, you know, just keep it on the down low.
We're open for questions if anyone has any questions or concerns with us, but that was a briefing of how our first meeting went. We do have meetings and discussions planned in the future for as far as any other situations that come up.
Just as you're here to represent the student population, how do you think students are feeling based on the attention? Are people very distracted from it at this point in time? Much ado about very little? I'm just trying to get some sense of, I mean, I know we've talked about it a lot, just trying to get some sense of your take on where the students are with respect to the situation.
I would say that now that everyone's kind of getting in their schedule, that it's not that big of an issue. And I know that a lot of the like student body representatives have communicated with everyone that like leggings are okay, just wear a long top, look appropriate. So I think that now that people are kind of understanding more, looking at the dress code and like communicating it with others, that they're not really focusing as much on it, they're more focusing on like academics, which is what the focus of school is on. But I think it's much better than it was at the beginning of the year, because I know it was a bigger issue at the beginning of the year. But I definitely think it's definitely like better now.
Thank you very much.
Do we need to do anything with this? No, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Speaker. Have some conversation about. Will Denise be, Mr. Lepore was taken within this committee?
Yeah, just a couple of brief comments. I thought that there was a very good, very frank and candid conversation with the students that had gathered. They had just fantastic points they all made. Great group of kids, very smart group of kids, as we would, I think, all expect. And I think that it really came down to more of an issue of interpretation, I think, because I think some kids were really concerned about not being able to wear clothes that they expected to be able to wear. But then, I think everybody pretty much was in acceptance, who's kind of looked at it with sort of a practical, common sense kind of an eye. And I think when the meeting concluded, I think everybody seemed to feel pretty good with, you know, their understanding about what was acceptable and what wasn't and why. I think Mrs. Freeman did a great job explaining the reasons behind the dress code as it was, and that really it has everything to do with, you know, showing respect for teachers and fellow students and the process, why they're there at school, you know, more than anything else. And I think the kids understood that and did a great job and had a wonderful discussion. And I think everybody's in a good place with regard to ultimately what was decided.
How will it be decided if they wear yoga pants or leggings? I heard him say something about appropriate coverings.
Right.
And how will that be measured or determined, what's appropriate covering?
Well, everybody's different. Everybody's a different size, everybody's a different shape. But what will be accepted is if somebody is wearing very form-fitting, skin tight, lycra spandex, yoga pants, no matter what it is, as long as they have a top that covers their bottom and that covers the front area that is supposed to be covered, which means just the kind of the crotch area. As long as they've got a top that comes far enough to cover their crotch in the front and cover their bottom in the back, it's good. So yoga pants are fine, jeggings, leggings, all those tight-fitting pants that a lot of the kids wear, they're in style now, as long as they have shirts that come down far enough. And I think what the kids are going to do is dress up a mannequin, show some examples of exactly where it should come. And again, because everybody's different sizes and shapes, when it came to skirts, really a skirt that comes down mid-thigh. So mid-thigh for one kid's going to be different, you know, different length of skirt for somebody else, so it's really kind of a common sense thing, you know? So mid-thigh for skirts was, all made sense to everybody, they understood that, so. I'm not sure where the pictures are going to be posted. I don't know whether it's going to be on the Campbell website or something like that.
That's what he mentioned.
Yeah, so I think that'll be really helpful to, for people to see exactly, you know, what they're talking about when they say covering, you know, the front and the back.
Can you have the conversation?
So this will put this issue to bed?
It should. One thing that I would suggest, though, that I think, we kind of touched on it at the meeting, was that I think it'd be really important for the eighth grade kids coming into the high school and their parents, and I think for any, every year, you know, in the spring to have, to revisit the dress code. Because I think, you know, as the weather gets warmer, you know, and kids are wearing lighter and lighter clothing and maybe a little bit less clothing than they do in the wintertime, that, you know, the issues crop up again, you know, toward, when the weather gets really hot. So it might be a good idea to kind of reconfirm again, maybe some more pictures on the website.
Pull out that mannequin again?
Yeah, pull out the mannequin again. And also, just for school shopping purposes, way before people shop, you know, it might be nice before the end of school to say, okay, you know, here's the dress code again, take a look at it before you go out and spend any money on school clothes, just to make sure that when you do shop, you're getting something that goes along with the dress code.
I hate to put one more task on Director Callenan's basket, because she has done so much in the two years that she's been here and done it so well. But as part of grade eight orientation next year, might be a great time, because it's well in advance of summer shopping and things like that. And I know you went out of your way this year to do that, you have the letter to the HLN and a lot of other things. But by then, often the shopping is done and.
And we don't have any of these issues at our other two schools. You guys are okay with our existing dress code?
It works for us.
So we need to make a motion on this, or?
We're not changing anything, I don't believe.
So just a clarification of expectations, so we're good?
Yep.
Wonderful.
Make a lot of people happy. All right. Next is correspondence. I'll actually get several.
Can you just get that one from Betty Vaughn?
No, the only one I have is from John from earlier today.
That's from Betty Vaughn.
Is that the same one?
Yeah, that's it. So we do have.
You actually didn't get that one. I just ordered the two.
So we do have correspondence from Betty Vaughn recommending that we look at less processed food. And whether or not we're being consistent with our, the nutrition part of our health curriculum. And that's about it. That's the gist of it.
All right. I received several. First one from Mr. Garette, just informing us that he's responsible for contracting for televising, so if there's any conflicts or changes to go through Jason. I also received one from Jason voicing his interest in the open position for school board. And I also received one from Ralph Bowen, also expressing his interest in the open position.
And you should, the other one should be the one that you and I discussed.
Yep. I didn't receive one from her, though, but.
No, I meant the one that you showed me earlier.
Oh.
Meets criteria.
Okay, let me find that again. From Cecile, who was here, I'm just going to find her last name, I'm sorry, Bonapair, who sent me a personal email thanking me for the support towards the superintendent and thanking me for the work. And there was also a second one from Michael Corry, and I believe that was in reference to the security system in Nashua. I think that might be it. I believe that's it for correspondence. So if there's any of those you need, Michelle, just let me know if you didn't get them.
The only one, I just need the ones you mentioned, I don't need Betty Vaughn's.
Okay. All right, so I'll send those off to you. Next is approval of draft minutes from 10-1, 2014. Any other conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. 400. Which brings us to community forum.
Good evening, Jason Reddell, I'm in Berry Court. Just two things real quick. People at home know that the projections are out, but they don't typically get read. I thought they were very interesting today. Right now, we're looking at the school enrollment for the district at 1,414 students. Five years from now, that looks like 1,005, which is a significant drop in our district over five years. I honestly don't know if people understand what that means, but that's, that's a third, that's a whole school worth of kids gone in five years if the projections hold, so that's, that's, can be quite catastrophic to a district this size. Secondly, I read this morning, there are several school districts in New Hampshire, for me most notably Londonderry, who have obtained permission to not use the smarter balanced assessment for their 11th graders. The tool that they're going to use to measure is the SATs, which I thought was fantastic, because it gives you a real-time understanding of where kids are that are going to be going to college versus something that I think is a very flawed tool in the, in smarter balanced anyway. But if we want, you know, I've heard many times over the years how kids just can't get into testing because it means nothing. Well, taking the SAT is something, is something, right? So if we, you know, if we're looking for kids to be motivated to take something, at least they understand the role of the SAT in their collegiate lives, and there won't, you know, be less, you know, less reason for them to overlook it. But I thought it was a very interesting thing that came out today. You might want to take a look around and see what's involved in that.
As of last Friday, the latest that I had heard was they were looking at it as a potential pilot a year from this spring. They're still in negotiations with the federal Department of Ed. There's actually another model that they're looking at going forward. So it really looks as though the existing waiver, it won't be available under, but we're still negotiating the second two-year waiver. So the interesting part about the existing US DOE waiver is that it's a two-year waiver with like a three- or four-year plan.
Right.
Which doesn't always make a whole lot of sense, so, but there are a lot of school districts who would be interested. The agreement appears to be to have Londonderry piloted for one year, evaluate, and then see if other, other districts are interested in doing the same.
Right.
The most common criticism of a high school-based no child left behind test, external test, is that it's not meaningful to students who, to a significant percentage of students. That percentage can go up and down. There are some things that schools control, but there are some in every school who don't take it seriously, who do not care how it impacts the school. So that, that piece is there. It would cause us to have to re-baseline our SAT scores, because it would be 100% of students who would be taking it. And it most likely mean that the average score and the median score would drop, because we're now, it's not a select population, it's the entire population. But there are some significant advantages. It will be more costly than smarter balanced, and the districts would have to pick up that differential, is my understanding. But it's something we're keeping track of, and we've talked with the high school about.
Yeah, today was, and I was familiar with last week's, you know, where is it at? But again, today was Arnie Duncan signed off on it, so I was like, well, there you go. Thank you.
What percentage of our students take SATs today? What percentage of students are taking SATs today?
I can tell you PSATs.
PSAT numbers are way up this year, are they not?
Yeah, because they, they don't.
Yeah, they don't necessarily.
Take them here. They do need them for college admissions, so.
I can find that out.
Yeah.
I just be curious what the difference was.
PSATs, most of the students take them here, because we do it as a testing site. But SATs, they can take them.
Anywhere.
Anywhere. But to get into most colleges, you have, so the number of kids going to a two- and four-year college is.
We're in the low 80s.
Low 80s. I was going to say low 80s. So you can, you can say low 80s probably for SATs.
So if I can add to Mr. Garette, in the union leader today, they have a nice little article on SAT and ACT tests. You know, while they, part of it is talking about the score, the other half the argument talks about the number of SAT tests takers in the class of 2014, this is the class they're critiquing here, was 167 million, which is up less than a percent from last year. Now, this is across the whole, the whole scope of the United States, compared with a 2.6% increase to 1.85 million for the ACT test. The ACT numbers are likely to rise over at least the next two years, as more states decides to fund, decide to fund it during the school day. In the class of 2014, 10 states require and paid for their public school students to take the ACT when they were juniors. Two states were added for the class of 2016, and six more will be added this year and will be reflected in the class of 2016 report. Illinois and Arkansas also pay for the test for school districts that approve it. The College Board is working to encourage districts to make the SAT available during the school day. And currently, three states, Maine, Delaware, and Idaho, and the District of Columbia, pay for students to take the SAT test. So I think that if the process is going to occur, that you're going to change your scoring process, in this case, moving away from Common Core and to SAT or ACT, then it's probably going to be something that has to begin to be ministered during the day, because you can't, you know, can't make somebody come in on a Saturday and take a test if they don't want to. But, you know, like all our other testing that has happened across the day, across the school time, this may be the same thing, so maybe something the district would have to take a look at. But, you know, that's how you're going to begin to judge your students in the high school, which I think may be a better idea of how they're doing, then it may be something the district will need to look at, irrelevant to what the state does or other districts do, if that's something that we're going to look at.
Just a little bit of background, the SAT is very predominant in both the east and west coast. ACT predominates in most of the rest of the country. ACT was designed, was meant to mirror and measure high school curriculum more, whereas the SAT was curriculum independent. And they're working to change that, so that in essence, they'll be, the new SAT will be much better aligned to Common Core standards, actually, and therefore reflect school-based curriculum. And the SAT, as of a vote in 1992, no longer stands for the Scholastic Aptitude Test, because it wasn't a great predictor of how kids do in school. So it, for 20 years now, it just stands for SAT, not Scholastic Aptitude Test. The best predictor of how kids do in school outside of, after high school, is how they've done in high school. Who'd have thunk? So.
Now it brings us to superintendent comments.
I think I just finished it.
See, I didn't skip you this time either.
I try not to use thunk anymore.
Okay. School board comments? Any? Committee reports, building planning advisory committee.
We, we met yesterday at GMS, had a nice little tour of the 30s building, and are going to hope to bring to the board in the next 30 days a change of use for that building. And once we approve that change of use, our goal is to allow then GMS and LMS to be able to run, store things through that building, and some things in the high school as we go through the process. But we believe that there's also for the SAU to move some documents and stuff into that place. So we believe we'll be able to use it for storage, not long-term storage, but short-term storage, some filing cabinets and things like that, will be moved into one room that will be a little more secured, because of the documents that will be in there. But it will, you know, it's probably, I don't know, 2,000 square feet of space, maybe, that will be available for storage for the two, LMS and GMS to bring stuff, which means your pods will go away. So things in the pod need to be gone by June 30th, because there will be no pod money for next year. So just to give you a motivation today, heads up, that I think that's going to occur if that. The other thing we talked about was the building of updating GMS. We are having it looked at. We want to do it in sections, five different sections, one section a year for five years, improving airflow, air conditioning, heating in the sections as we go. Kevin is going to actually have a conversation with Liberty Utilities to see if they would be interested in running gas pipelines from where they stop on 3A down across the front of GMS and through the woods to LMS, which would allow for the conversion of their boilers from oil to gas, which we believe will solve some. which we believe will solve some... You know, if oil's cheaper, we hit the oil switch, and gas is cheaper, we hit the gas switch. And so those are the things that we're looking for. We hope to be able to, again, have enough information to have the board approve some funds for a mechanical engineer to go in and begin looking at what is necessary. You know, I give you an idea of, you know, this is the ideas, but I think it would be more based on the structure of the building. But you could do the fourth grade classes and what's surrounding them in the third grade classes, second grade classes, first grade classes, and so forth through that process. But the idea is to have updated GMS to the 21st century in about five years. And so we were pretty excited about the things we talked about, and hopefully some of them will be able to occur in a detailed plan that the board approves and the voters approve. And then we can just, you know, know what's going to happen every summer for that school.
Awesome.
So that's where we are.
Was there any thoughts of doing it as just a one article and doing it all at once?
No, because as we discussed that, they only really have 45 days when there's no school. Basically go from, you know, end of June to the middle of August, at which point in time, they really need to be... They nearly need to be getting the school prepared for school. And I don't know if they could hire that big enough an army to come in and knock it out at one time. So the suggestion was to...
Oh, that makes sense.
Do it in... As pods or sections and whatever. So they're not overwhelmed. But if we could, we would, but I don't...
I don't think that's possible.
It didn't seem that the people who knew would think that was a good idea.
So John, on the 30s building, you said that within 30 days, you'll have an idea as far as the changes that they want to implement in that building? Will that also be laid out as far as cost? And what's gonna be involved as far as upgrading it?
We believe the cost is probably somewhere between $3,000 to $5,000. Part of that would be installing a security system in that part of the building.
They need sprinklers too, right?
They don't need sprinklers because it's got firewalls. And what will be being stored in there is not a... Are not gonna be high flammable items. And so Kevin Lynch is having a conversation with the fire marshal or whoever the fire inspector is for Lynchfield and stuff, and letting him know what the change of use is going to be and how we're going to use it, and just to make sure that they're okay with that. I mean, it has fire alarm, so it has smoke detectors. It has fire extinguishers and stuff like that. But the change of use that they're going to go to will not require a sprinkler system in that part of the building.
It will limit that some of the things that might be stored there. They would have to be classified as basically low combustibility. Mr. Gret, if I stand corrected, is that...
No, that's correct.
That's a reasonable interpretation of the technical language?
Yeah, that's sufficient. You know, stacked pack of paper in a banker's box is not very flammable. It's very dense. You know, if you're gonna store corrugated products, it's not something you can do. You know, boxing, regular boxing. Desks and fixtures and cabinets and things are very, very easy to...
I'm certain by eliminating the pods, they'll also probably pay for that in...
Oh, yeah. I mean, the pods, I think, were $1,200 a year. So, you know, I don't know how many there are, but easily, within one year, the money is back, the savings there. But Frank will have to find the money this year. But I think that, you know, we heat that area, we move air through that area, and it just sits there. So we might as well use it for something right now.
Very good. Thank you. Enrollment projections?
These are the enrollment projections using three-year weighted average. The formula, while I was trying to spend some time to determine the algorithm, I had the foresight to email Mr. Spencer, who forwarded me 15 minutes later the formula. And so this is based on... The grade one projections are based on the ratio, the three-year average of live births to grade one enrollments. The most recent year is rated at a factor of three. The next most recent year, a factor of two. The third most recent year, a factor of one. And they just simply divide. And then the rest of the grades just go on a three-year average of cohort survival rate. The last three grades that have moved from grade to grade, what is the percentage of students, weighted three times, two times, one times, and so on. And this is the model that the School Boards Association has provided us every year. Some obvious trends, the numbers are going down. And they're going down, in essence, I think we said either last week or the week before, as a very simple function of we're graduating more students at the end of grade 12 than we're bringing in in grade one the next year. And for the last several years, the difference isn't... Doesn't appear that we're losing students from grades one through 12. It's just a function of the live births and the relatively flat number of residences in the town. So if you project out, the last time we had four grade ones was 1213, when there were 91 students, the cutoff point would be 84 students. So 93, sorry, 91 live births, 93 students. 75 in grade one last year, 78 this year. Live births dropped to 74. Now kindergarten enrollment this year is actually 73, which means that one of these years, if we keep... If we have numbers, we're gonna get whacked with... We're gonna have to find an extra grade one class and a grade one teacher. This year, once we decided that we're gonna put that lab in, then we really had no option. There was no physical room to put them in. So we were, you know, committed to one. But there's always the off chance that you're gonna come in with eight... With seven kids who enroll in the last minute. But right now, it looks as though we're looking at for the foreseeable future, bringing in four grade one classes every year. If you look at the high school, we have two... The last two very big classes of students right now, the junior class is 138, and the freshman class is 140. So this year and next, the high school enrollments will be in and around the 500 range. After that, we'll bring in... We'll lose a class of about 140 and bring in a class of about 20, 25 students less. And then two years later, is the last group. This year's freshmen, when they exit, every class behind them is five classes with no sixes at all. One of the challenges of the district really is to plan and to balance some of the educational needs with those decreases. Try to maintain the quality of teaching staff and the number of full-time teaching staff, and try to... And if you think back to the $1.25 million budget cut, we still are trying to rebuild those resources. And you'll see some attempt in the budget process this year to try and build some of that back. I suspect that, over time, one of the ways we may want to build back up to where I think, and a lot of people think we need to be in terms of the resources, will be not to take an annual cut in a full teacher, to try and balance that reduction with taking some of that savings and turning it into the additional resources that we need for students who are struggling and for students who need to be stretched at the top. I think we started that work in the last couple of years. But I think we have to be able to make the value proposition that we need more resources, we have students with needs, we have a desire to enhance programs. And I trust that the board will be arguing with me for those goals. On to the technology report. Mr. Hancock is away this week. Well-deserved week off. It's first in quite a while. Any questions? When it says IT tickets, I believe that refers to school dude requests. We do have an issue with the phone system here. As I indicated a meeting or two ago, the system that was purchased when the school was built was a used system. It's now more than 20 years old. And kind of like our student information system, we would not be surprised if it died on any particular day. So we do have some significant needs. Thank the folks at the SEU office and the high school for their patience during the time when the phones were down. Everybody had to go back in and reset their voicemail. They lost any voicemails that were left, you know. But we're working on that moving forward. And I don't know if it's in the report or not, but we will be, late this month, be looking at visiting two schools to look at the two vendors for the new student information system. Bow High School is using Infinite Campus, and I think we're looking at Hopkinton for following aspects.
So I'm very impressed on the saving of printed pages. I know copy pages are where people are just walking up to the machine and making copies. And so they're not easily... As easily tracked as something being sent from a computer and stuff. So my only suggestion in that process, and sometimes it's easy and sometimes it's not, is to encourage all staff to begin to scan whatever it is they're going to be copying into a PDF into their computers or into their processes, so they have it. For several reasons. One, they're gonna... If they can do that, and it's like... Or take it and print it from the computer, it'll be a cleaner copy instead of a fifth generation of a copy, something copied 10 years ago that has, you know, numerous things. So, and that'll, again, allow the district, you know, the principals and stuff. You begin to be able to see the savings of paper and cost. And while a penny copy doesn't sound like a lot, you know, many copies later, when it's two or three cents with the cost of the paper, you would much rather spend that money on other things other than paper and to a Canon or Conor Comino or Xerox vendor. So the more control you ask, you ascertain on that process. And so, meaning the less actual copy of a copy you're doing. And even in the sense that if a document needs to be recreated in Excel or Word or something like that, if they take that time to do that, you, as administrators, will find a much better benefit. It'll be much easier for the teachers if they could just send it from their desk and have it there. And if they have four or five jobs there, and they just walk down and punch in whatever their code is, which is, I imagine, how they're coding it, and hit their code, and their four or five jobs then print out. You know, they're making one trip and loading that aspect. So, you know, I think it's a great job right there. If you save in one month, you know, in this case, almost 60,000 or 50,000 pages, you run that across, you know, 10 or 12 months, you're... You know, that's almost the copies of one school being saved. And that's, you know, that's a great job in that aspect, so.
Brings us on to principals' reports. And first up is Mr. Thompson.
Actually, those are not verables. Those are just written for the points information.
Okay, good. Good for me. Let's go on to budget presentations, and we start with food service.
If I may, Mr. Chair, while Ms. Lawrence makes her way up to the podium for her award. Just to review very quickly. Tonight, even though we're referring to the presentation by the budget managers as the recommended budget, this is really the first go-around we wanted each of the budget managers had the opportunity to bring to the board, really, which is in format their requested budget. These are, if you will, the budget that they would like, they had put together at the input from, they received from their staff. So Superintendent and I haven't had a chance to review with them other than just review and format and what they've done. So tonight is really their requested budget. And from that, and per your schedule, by the end of this month, the Superintendent and I will have an opportunity to review the budgets, make some changes. And the superintendent then will present his budget to you folks at the end. And I think the schedule calls for the first weekend. In November, the cuts we made by the board are submitted to us, and we will then present to you the final superintendent's recommended budget for you to move on to the Budget Committee adjournment. So tonight is really an opportunity for the budget managers to give it their best shot as to what their budgets hold and some of the high points, if you will, of some of the substantial increases that they put in, or decreases, as it may be.
Okay. I have a very short budget, and my budget's only three pages long. And I will start with the first page. Our commodities look like they'll be going down, $22,000 now. These commodities are based on the number of meals that we serve every year. They're multiplied, the number of meals that we serve prior year times the current entitlement rate. Now, federal law requires and provides schools that are part of the National School Lunch Program an entitlement in terms of USDA foods. And this entitlement is based on the number of meals served. We, I think we over-budgeted a little bit this year, $27,000. And if you look at the prior year, last year, and previous year, it was more like $22,000. And with decreasing enrollment, I think that the $22,000 for next year is a good number for the commodity foods. Now, this is an expense as well as a revenue. So it's sort of... It's called... It's a revenue because it's entitlement dollars. And as we spend it off, the revenues are offset by the monies we spent monthly for these commodity foods. So the net effect really is zero. So you'll find that this amount, $22,000, is not only in the expense budget, but also is in a revenue, and it's offset at zero. But we also, federal law requires that we do have to state it in our budgets. That's why you'll find that always in our budget.
From an accounting standpoint, it's very similar to federal grants. You spend it yearly first for your commodities.
What exactly is a commodity food?
Arnie?
What exactly is a commodity food?
Commodity foods can be a number of things. Now, with the nutrition guidelines, the government is providing a lot more based on the nutrition standards. So we're seeing a lot more fruits and vegetables. And we see commodity cheese and meats and assortment of foods. The budget, we see about $22,000. That's about... That's budgeted. Current entitlement rate now is about 24 and 3/4 cents. So it's almost 25 cents for every meal that we serve. So instead of giving it to us in dollars, we get it in subsidies.
So is that when the board was talking the other day, and we asked how much money that we're getting from the federal government? And if, does it make sense to continue with that program? Or to just kick them out of our food? Is this the amount? Is this the total amount, $22,000?
The federal gives us entitlements in form of USDA foods, John, and also in form of reimbursement for the meals we serve. For example, for every free meal we serve, we get so much money. Those are subsidies, actual cash that they provide us.
And so where is that? Where is that, John?
$80,000. And it's between state and federal and the commodities reimbursement. You're looking at about $85,000 on the average for you coming into the district.
A little more. So a lot of people with a nutrition stance are opting out of nutrition, the National School Lunch Program. But it does provide, like Frank says, about... But it does provide, like Frank says, about, close to about ninety thousand dollars of income in form of subsidies and in form of actual cash.
So how do the kids like the food now?
Well, with the nutrition standards, we have to provide a lot more variety of foods, a lot more fresh fruits and vegetables. And as we all know, the fresh fruit or vegetable is, they need to take that, it's required to take that. Otherwise, it doesn't count for a complete reimbursable lunch that we get subsidized for. So we try to encourage all the children. We don't force them, we encourage them to take at least a fruit or vegetable, especially for those who are receiving free and reduced benefits in order for them not to pay for the meal. Unfortunately, and it's been, there's been studies that say that a lot of this fruit and vegetable goes into the trash. We're finding, they're finding that so much. But I think it's a good, it's a good intention to get kids to eat more fruits and vegetables. But unfortunately, the reality is that some of it does get thrown in the trash.
So just, just, 'cause we got an email about the foods. How much other food is actually made from scratch or something like that? I mean, is it all cans and frozen stuff or?
Because there's a mandate now that we have to be careful with the saturated fats and the sodium content, especially now, as well as the calories. We're working on getting more frozen vegetables and fresh fruits and vegetables versus canned, which of course has the sodium requirements. We have now, that has come into effect, they're called the Smart Foods Act of two thousand fourteen, that just came into effect July of this year, where competitive foods or foods outside the school lunch program have to meet the guidelines as well. That means vending machines, school stores, à la carte foods from school lunch programs. So there's a lot of the government regulations that we have to, you know.
The reality is food service, especially in public debt, is that they're just not enough man hours. You have to look at prepared foods in order to provide under the guidelines. The lunches game up and the time and that, we just do not have a number of hours.
I like that, but a lot of the prepared foods are CN labeled. Well, when I say CN label, it's called child nutrition label-ly. And they count as the protein and the grains and the food or vegetable. And once they have these labels, they, CN labels include processed foods. And you'll find, yes, we do have the chicken nuggets and we do have hot dogs. But if they're CN labeled, they are approved by the, and meet the guidelines of the government. People see, like, for example, chicken nuggets, they don't see that it's a low-fat product and a low-sodium product and a whole wheat. We have to meet, and all of the schools have done for the state, food nutrition analysis that say that we do and we need to meet the guidelines. And this year, fortunately, we are going to be audited. We have this three-year administrative audit. This year, they have, we are one of the schools that they are going to be audited. They will be looking at nutrition content of our meals as well, closely look at that. So that's a good thing for us.
So is it just not feasible in a timeframe to actually cook food, I guess? Like chicken fajita wrap, instead of having like a?
Oh, we do have, we do have a chicken fajita wrap.
Yeah, but is it, I mean, is it real chicken though?
Yes, it is. It's muscle chicken, and a lot of it is commodities. It's muscle chicken, it's not like chicken processed.
I eat lunch at GMS kind of frequently, and every time I see it, it's like, it looks like a piece of, like, stamped something with like the fake grill marks on it, like?
That's a chicken teriyaki.
So, I mean, is there just not time to cook real chicken, I guess? Or does it cost more money? I guess what's the, I guess why do we buy the fake chicken versus the fresh chicken, I guess?
Fresh chicken, there's time involved and there is labor involved.
And it's just not the time to do it, basically.
And we do have, we do use, we do use fresh, when we have commodity chicken, we do also use that in our menus.
Okay, so the commodity chickens literally from the federal government, they ship us boxes of stamped chicken and?
They also provide us with processed foods as well.
What about the French toast sticks? What are those made out of? The French toast sticks?
Derek, if you really want to go there?
No, French toast sticks, we do use a whole grain French toast stick. And again, we have a CN labeled French toast stick. And it cannot have a CN label or child nutrition label unless it's approved by the government.
Last time my son had them, he came home sick, so.
Well, if you'd like to come in, you know, you can come and look at our labels.
The kids in the high school eat very well.
Got two more years then.
So going back to the budget, we have, we see that the district-wide finance services, it's level funded. There are no changes to that. Food service operation district-wide, which is my travel dues and fees and software lease, we see an actual reduction of forty-one dollars. And our software lease with a new NutriKid system is actually lower than our previous one. A decrease in my travel and a little bit of increase in the dues and fees. Second page, we see Griffin Memorial School. Just a reduction of four thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars. Again, based on previous year's expenditures and enrollment rates, we see that our budget for food and supplies have, actually need to go down. I think we overbudgeted a little for this year, based on previous years. Same as the Litchfield Middle School, you'll see there's a reduction of about thirty-seven hundred dollars. Again, based on decreasing enrollments. And on page three, you find that Campbell High School, again, a little bit of a reduction, I think because we've overbudgeted this year. Any questions?
Is there a reason why LMS equipment repair replacement is less than the other two schools?
Actually, we did, if you take a look at last year's equipment replacement, we did replace the computers for the new, in order to accommodate the new software. And also, there's a big increase of, because we had to buy a new steamer. We don't foresee that the repairs, because of this, these purchases, I don't foresee that we're going to have some major repairs in that school. Because we just bought some new equipment for that.
But both GMS and CHS, you see?
Again, with the aging equipment, we have to, you know, for any kind of unforeseen, you know, repairs, we have to account for that.
This is always a tricky budget, food service budget and public schools, because it is, it is a budget. It is a fund, except for from general funds. So we have to really look at what we're anticipating generating on revenues. And Litchfield as a district is better than a lot of other school districts in so much as we have an assigned fund balance of around seventy thousand dollars. So if we do have unanticipated expenditures, we can draw upon it as we did this past year. So with the software. But again, this is a budget that's pretty much driven by revenue. And yes, we would like to place more money in the equipment repair and new equipment. There are certainly pieces of equipment that maybe we'd like to have or maybe could enhance a little bit. But again, this is, this is a revenue-driven budget. What supports the appropriations, which is, comes directly from the food service revenue. And as you can see, some of it comes from the subsidies, but a lot of it comes from sales, as you saw last year.
And it's a budget that's turned around in the last two or three years in terms of decreasing fund balance at the end and not having any equipment replacement to having equipment replacement and building the fund balance up, which really, you know, we needed to do, so.
With the price increases we just passed, do we have a best guess at, like, what our, I guess our fund balance will be this year, then with this budget next year? Or is it, is two, or is it two to tell?
It's really got a little to it.
We're just sort of posting September, start of school year.
I guess the reason I say that is just because I understand it would take more time and more money to have fresher foods. But I'd be, if we know we're going to have extra money, the fund balance is great, but I'd rather see ways to, you know, can we?
We're gonna, we're really looking into that. We really are. And I think a lot of it, we do have to use the commodity foods, the twenty-two thousand dollars worth of commodity. But I think they've taken great strides in trying to provide meat to standards. We're seeing a lot more fresh fruits and vegetables. We're seeing salad bars, which we're pretty popular in all the schools. That are, if they don't like the hot meal, which we feature at least a hot meal and a sandwich, we also have, they always go, you know, can go for the salad bar. We say processed foods, a lot of these, what we call processed foods are, they do meet, they have to meet the sodium, they do have to meet calorie, they do have to meet all of these guidelines. And that's why they, a lot of these processed, so-called processed foods have what we call CN labels or child nutrition labels, which have passed the rigors of the standards of child nutrition. I would love to see, and we are looking for ways to see more fresh. I'm thinking, let's make our own, for example, meatballs. But if you're taking a look at five meatballs times like three, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty students serving, you've got a lot of time and labor involved in something like that. I guess we could look at labeling and see, get more muscle meat for chicken nuggets. You can't take away a chicken nugget. I guess you could make your own chicken nuggets and use chicken breasts and start cutting, however, six hundred pieces of chicken and start breading them on your own so that you don't get the sodium and then cook them on your own. Does require some labor. But I do see your point where it is very important that we get these fresh fruits and vegetables in kids. And my staff is very well aware of that. And the grill marks, I was teasing Frank, he said, "Look at the grill marks on these." And I said, "We actually put them out in the grill." He looked at us as though he thought we were really serious, but.
I want to know how much gas it turns.
That's passed on to the heating.
It's your budget.
Well, you're probably between a rock and a hard place between making nutritious meals for the kids and staying in compliance with Washington DC.
Okay, so we have to stay, we have to comply with regulations, the nutrition standards. Some people feel our, some congressmen are actually trying to overturn some of these regulations, and you've seen that in the media. We have to provide food that the kids will actually eat and not throw in the trash can. So we, and we still have to be budget-conscious and make money. So we have to, we have all of these things.
You get a lot of good feedback as well from the wellness committee that some of the individuals sitting in this room right now participated in. So that's, that's an important venue for you as well to receive that important and things.
And we, I always welcome any input, I really welcome any input from you, from members of community, parents, students. We'd like to get students involved as well, or students involved in menu planning, things like that. There is also, I'd like to just point out that the NutriKid system that we did acquire just last year has been really successfully received. I think it's been, it has provided us so much more efficient production, especially with, if you take a look at our district compared to many districts in the country, our, we're not in our, money that is owed us very, you know, significantly lower than many of the districts that have problems with people paying up money in the early years. I think that NutriKids is that. And they have, which is really good, and I would like to try to see if I can, you know. They do have a menu planner, they have a nutrient analysis, which I've already looked into, talked to a salesman about getting. So we could actually plug in the foods, which they have a big database of all of the school nutrition foods, plus our recipes, plug it in, and we could get a calorie, a fat, a sodium, a protein, a carbohydrate, all of that. You know, we could do it ourselves. I think that's a big, a big, a good investment, and I think that's something that we should work toward. So that we could show the community that after all, come in and take a look to see what we're feeding the kids. And I invite all of you to also go to other school districts and take a look at menus. They're very similar to ours, very similar. I challenged my staff to see if they could find a menu product, menu item featured in another school district that we are not featuring. And so far, it's basically the same. It's really just the quality of the food that you purchase. And we're not under any bid process except for milk. But we do not go with the cheapest food at all times. We look at the quality and see what the food's like, what the kids like and will eat. And another thing as far as fresh foods, we see that in different, different schools. You see that Griffin versus the high school, the taste's a little different. They're more sophisticated at the high school. So if we do something homemade, like a shepherd's pie, for example, or something like that, we serve it at grade school level and they, it's not their chicken nuggets or the pizza they're used to. Their counts are low. They're just, the participation low.
I miss shepherd pie day. I always end up on hot dog day.
Sloppy Joes.
Meatball salt chicken.
Do you ever observe, like, you talked about like kids throwing it away. You want to take a vegetable, you want to take them a fruit. Does anyone ever observe, like, after each meal, like, what's getting thrown away? And then from there, like, say, okay?
We've noticed it, which recently, we were just talking to Lori about the food that gets thrown away.
I would think the high school would be like, much less, I mean, where it's more à la carte and?
We ask them to, you know, if they're not going to eat it, to save it, put it in their backpack, take it for home, give it to a friend, just so that they will take it. There are suggestions on what to do with some of these foods that are thrown away. But it's a problem, and I've just read an article, interesting article, that four million dollars worth of fruits and vegetables have been thrown away in the country this year because of the fact that they have to take it to count as a meal, which is unfortunate because the intent is good to get more fruits and vegetables in.
That's a national issue.
That's a national issue.
I just know that, I've been in GMS enough times, and Derek had said the same thing, where you watch what's on the kid's plate and you watch what gets thrown away. And it just, you gotta kind of wonder why everyone's throwing away the same item. I mean, can something else be replacing that item rather than continue serving something they're just going to throw away?
We look at our production records, and if it's something that's not, like I said, if it's something like we serve at the high school and it's not a favorite item, then we try not to serve it again. We try to, we try to encourage new recipes. And for example, we did a corn and black bean salsa because it's healthy. And we find that the kids are throwing away. It's just something that I guess we just have to keep trying.
I know my kids like the pizza night one, the external pizza, but they don't like the school pizza.
Right.
They'll always look at the menu on Friday, "Oh, it's school pizza."
Is it Romano's? Okay, I'll have it. If it's not?
But the cost is probably different.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, GMS.
To help kind of focus any areas that were, had changes of fifteen hundred dollars or more, I made a little list, which I'll pass around.
Did you make a list?
I did.
Sure. I'll miss three items.
You can try hard enough.
Is it one page, Scott?
It is.
Mine's two.
All righty. So this is also just helping some focus. I included some things on the bottom, just for future participation. You'll be aware that those things are in there. And most of what we're presenting tonight is fairly flat in changes. To, I'll just go through the budget. Well, maybe we'll look at the list for a moment. That probably is a good idea. So in the six items where there were changes of more than fifteen hundred dollars, two were actually a decrease. And the first one was the equipment replacement in the PE mats. We bought those last year, it was a one-time purchase, so that was taken out. And then down below is thirty-four, thirty-two for the playground fence. Again, that was a one-time thing. We bought that, so that was taken out of the budget. The other changes of more than fifteen hundred dollars. One is furniture additional. Grade four in particular has some pretty archaic furniture. Some of it was homemade and not so well, and made not so well. And so we're looking to add furniture to grade four classrooms. One table, one classroom, for example, one of the kidney-shaped table for small group instruction. And then the two bigger things down below, this is speculative, but with a projected budget, I think there is some of that. If we in fact, and this is the if, if we in fact have fewer classes based on enrollment last year, I would like and propose to use one, the empty classroom, or an empty classroom, to have a music room. We don't have a music room, and the music program this year, we have, I think it's a hundred and thirteen students in chorus, which is bigger than any class we have. It's only grade three and four. But in addition, Mrs. Labelle, if you've been in the building when she's teaching music, she has a very large cart. It's probably six feet by three feet and moves everything from class to class. So the proposal would be to try to have a music room, if possible. And then down below? And then down below, there's a little inaccuracy, but I was typing. It says, "Replacement of TVs with VCR-compatible TVs." It really comes down to DVDs because we're kind of moving out of VCRs as a format, although we have a big library.
At least you didn't put, you know, A-Track.
Yeah, right. So, but the TV, the, when we have to replace a machine to show a DVD, or in some cases a VCR, the TVs are older and they're not compatible. So we thought we should begin replacing some of those TVs. Yeah. All right. So then I will jump to the budget per se.
What is the DI stipend?
Oh, thank you. So this is Destination Imagination.
Okay.
Which is currently a program run entirely by the PTO. It is not a school program. So my proposal is to bring this program into the school budget. We had last year six teams that went to the, am I mixing my years? I think that was last year, to the regional meet. We've been running it again for two years. And we also had, no, that was the year before, we had a team at the state meet in addition. But it is a wildly popular program and it's run entirely through volunteerism and money raised by the PTO. I think it's time, because it also feeds not only the DI program, but eventually the robotics program at the high school, I'd like to bring this into the school budget. In our collective bargaining agreement, one of the stipends, which has been inactive for a number of years, is for Destination Imagination. So I would like to activate that. And that would be the projected cost based on the step and scale in the collective bargaining agreement. In addition to the stipend, it is also, the PTO pays for supplies, dues, and fees, and transportation. I'd like to provide transportation to the meets. So these are the costs for that program, the food to do that. Okay?
So, so I know the PTO is still doing fundraising and stuff like that. Do they have other areas that they're looking to use their monies too?
It's in the budget for this year. My concern is that it's a contingent program, contingent upon PTO's ability and willingness to continue to raise money for it. And it's a big chunk of the program. It really grew exponentially last year. And so whether they can continue to do that, that I don't know for sure. But I think that it would, it's time to kind of bring it into the school program.
So, last year you had a budget of 156848. And you spent 143,576. So you, you underspent your budget of last year by $13,000, which I commend you on that. Is your, are these numbers included in your budget of 146635?
No, they're not. They're, because they're a new program, so they don't get entered into this until the new, there's a separate sheet.
This, Scott has included areas that aren't necessarily under the function that we were discussing this evening. Some of the stuff will come, come to you under the salaries and benefits presentation of your, of your budget schedule.
Okay, so, well, let's, then let's talk about the equipment, because that's not, I mean, the only, the only thing that would come under the salaries and benefits would be the DI stipend. That's great. So all these other items that you have listed here, have they been, have you added those into here?
Yes. Everything above that first blank line, those are all in the budget.
In this?
Yes.
And you, and you still flatlined your budget?
We did.
Can I editorialize? If you look at page, bottom of page 13, because this is what the budget committee is going to do, they're going to look at actual from 2013 of 138, and then a budget the next year of 158. To spend within $13,000 across this many budget lines is really incredible. How GMS does it, essentially with a few thousand dollars more every year and manages to target and prove in small areas is a tribute to Scott, the teachers, Deb Leary, who I know watches every penny and uses every penny to the absolute and utmost.
She does.
My concern is, is that it's so flatlined, we should probably be doing things like moving, and right now, a lot of the enhancements that have happened at GMS are funded by the PTO year in and year out. If it were not for the good work of the PTO, you know, there would, there would be significant, a significant decrease in opportunities and programs for kids. And, and it's unfair to require, I think, the elementary school to do that with the expectation that somehow it's the parent's responsibility to fund all of that stuff when we don't do that for the other schools. So I have to commend you for your results of last year, but I am concerned that, that I know that there are enhancements coming. If you look at this, Scott is trying to foreshadow conversations about DI, and you're going to see some increases in the technology budget for smart boards. And you're going to see some, you know, position requests, so you're going to see it in some other areas. But this is an area that I'm concerned actually that, that we're not showing a little bit more of an increase and, and putting into the regular budget some of the things that the PTO, it just does year in, year out, because they're assuming what really is the funding of a, of regular educational programs in, in some sense, in terms of extra and co-curriculars, so.
I was actually going to ask about technology. Are there, there still are smart boards in the technology budget? Okay. How many?
When I talked to Kyle the last, he said as he thought we would put in for four. We've actually had more requests than that, but we feel we need to be...
Okay. So how many were requested?
Eight.
Eight.
And if I can just say, I had the, the pleasure of visiting GMS principal, Thompson took me around through to take a look at the, the school. I hadn't seen it since my kids were in the school. And I have to say, it was just amazing, just how, how well organized everything was. These spaces at a premium and yet everything is neatly stored. I mean, you definitely have space issues and I, I agree with you, the music room would be a fantastic thing for you to be able to have. And, you know, Mrs. Labelle has so much equipment and, and it would be a wonderful thing to see at the school. But yeah, just done a wonderful job, I think, with the school. I got a chance to see those, the smart board in action in one of the classrooms and the kids were so engaged and, wow, what an amazing tool. And I, I got to see how the teacher, I think it was Mrs. Doucette, was, was teaching math to children, was it second grade?
First grade, yeah.
And to see all those first graders riveted and just enjoying the lesson so much with, you know, incorporating the smart board, it was, it was incredible. So just absolutely great.
So would you like to proceed page by page through the budget document?
Given the little difference from last budget, I'm kind of suggesting that we just...
I mean, I would encourage, I would encourage you guys to, to add the co-curricular first to that, while you'll add that in the first, but co-curricular supply, those are the things that you, you know, this is a great, this is great because it allows us to know where to look, okay? But I, I mean, I would want to see anything that you had on here, other than the, the one, the payroll process, because I know that's coming to us in a separate, but, but I would put it in here because I know that how, how we will look at it and how the budget committee will look at it is, is really bottom-line processes. They'll, they'll go through and, and take a look and see what was added, what was not added, and things like that. But, but in the bottom line, when they get down to it, if they see something is relatively flat and stuff like that, you know, they, they know that what's continuing is what is continuing in that, in that process. And I know the, the, the rule of thumb is sort of been, it's not an, it's not a written rule, but the rule of thumb is normally three years that a program gets up and gets running either through booster club or however that program is being run. If it runs successfully for three years, you know, that was the, that was the benchmark that previous boards had set. Doesn't necessarily mean it's written in law that we have to continue to follow that process, but, but you know, I, I think that program is, is very successful with, you know, the Destination Imagination program. So I, you know, if you think it's time to move it over, then, you know, by all means, let's move it over. But at the same time, just, you know, be careful. I know the PTO at GMS is very successful with their fundraising and, and things like that. So, I mean, it is, just be aware that, I don't know what they're going to do with all their success, but maybe they have other things that they want to purchase for the kiddies.
Well, I, there are, you mentioned earlier, there's a group that's looking at redoing the courtyard. That job, which, you know, they, they will eventually bring forward a proposal, that will be a costly item and it's great that they're looking to do that. This year...
Where the basketball courts and stuff are, right? Is that what they're talking about?
No, no, the courtyard, the...
You mean like, you know, what first grade is that?
Enclosed.
What we saw? Okay.
This year they increased the amount they contributed. I don't know if people are aware, but our PTO contributes to the school a large amount of money to offset the cost of all the field trips we do. So if memory serves, this year it went from 2,000 to $4,000 that they contributed, and that gets divided per capita among all the students. So, you know, there, there's a lot that they do, they'll find a use for the money. I'm not concerned about that.
Okay. I noticed, and maybe it's not in this budget, maybe it's in building and grounds, but I think we usually do one wing of windows every year. Is there replacement windows?
Um, yes, that's in the buildings and grounds budget.
So, last week when Julie Hion was here, she brought in district-wide...
Textbooks.
Of textbooks. So I take it that's not in here? What you normally would spend? I mean, do you know what...
For social studies textbooks?
I'm not certain. She's...
All textbooks that you're replacing should not be in your budgets. Because she took $65,000 and added it to her budget. So our understanding was that any book replacements were not going to be part of any of the three budgets.
Well, the things that are, like the consumables, the math books.
Consumables, no, no, no. Like if you were buying...
That's correct, John.
Textbook replacements.
Like if you were buying a new set of math books...
I did not include that.
In your budget?
Right.
So I'm just wondering, of that $65,000, how much of that is labeled towards GMS? And then we're talking about his budget's flat, but is it actually flat because now parts of the money are now in district-wide?
No, my understanding is that the entire line got moved and so it'll, the, so it's not like they spent $15,000 on textbooks this year and it'll show up short. The entire line got moved to the district, so...
So, so these numbers would have changed here, right?
Yes. This is, this is an apples-to-apples comparison.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for GMS right now?
Hope the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you. This now brings us on to LMS Athletics.
So I can, I mean, this kind of leads into my, my whole budget. You want me to do the same, same flow here? You're going to notice there's a short list. I'll put this in some context.
Are you setting up CHS?
It's all about the ice.
I'm the defender, she's off the ice.
Why do you say, "Let me go first?"
It's like, you're going to set this out, you're going to set that on Postus.
Tom's learned, he goes, "I want to get out of here. I'm not, I'm not rocking the boat here."
Yeah, good job.
Okay, so actually, John's question was a really good segue into the, the overall changes. You're going to notice that the overall general fund for LMS is down $80,000. There's some things in that, 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 that are not reflected here, that you'll hear on other nights, things related to technology, things related to other areas of the budget that we're not specifically focused on. So this really is just the general fund. The other thing that is not in here is personnel, because I don't have specific numbers around that yet, and as Dr. Cochran mentioned, that'll be another night around salaries and benefits. Though I will mention a couple of things tonight. So, the first thing, the math, and I am going to actually move to that line in the, in the budget, because we had resources budgeted last year for math textbooks, and that's why there was a significant decrease this year in, in that area. So a few things are happening in math. Obviously, we're not going to be making a purchase again next year. However, we are looking to do some supplement around technology with math. And it's not the only way to differentiate and individualize instruction, but it is a really useful way to do that. And to that end, we have the Tenmark software. You can see listed there under the item for math, which you approved last week, I believe. Perk approved it, and then you also approved it last week, so thank you. And we're already getting into some of that right now with students. We've been, been able to use that with students. The other program that is not listed here, but while we're talking about math, that is a supplemental piece, is called Geometers. And, and again, that'll be part of Kyle's presentation. You'll see that line item there. But basically, it's a site license for three years for Geometers. And it's an area that we're looking at in terms of math, is our geometry and measurement. And, you know, we've looked at data over the years and we feel like it's a really, that's one area that technology can be a great resource for us. Just so many interactive things around the shapes and all the elements of geometry there. So that's another thing that will be reflected in the, in the budget. But that, that reduction, that minus 8,000 was really due to the purchase last year and of course, we're not doing that again next year. Talk about music just for a minute. So I've come to you almost annually requesting various instruments, xylophones and other, other, other instruments over the years. And this year, you're going to also hear this at the, in the, in the high school budget. But I know Carolyn Lee and Phil Martin have put together some numbers looking at an instrument lease, and I actually have the backup here if you want to see this. But it's a choice of two, three, or two, three, four, or five years. And, and basically, looking at the instruments that are more of the unique instruments of the band and leasing instead of purchasing them. So that's, that's the number there. The listed instruments are in the music line item of the budget.
And that's the, so it's...
So Veritron, saxophone.
It's like $10,000, is that every year for three years, or is that buying them?
So that is the total.
That's the purchase?
That is the total. So for, for five years, the annual lease payment would be $2,700. For four years, $3,100. Three years, yeah, it's more if it's less, less term, less of a term. But for five years, it would be $2,700.
For those of you who have not had kids in band, what essentially happens is you have students come in, you're, you're expecting as a parent to pay the normal, you know, cost for an instrument. But in order to have a band with the right mix of instruments, there are some relatively expensive instruments that you end up trying to convince people to play. And it's really, you're, you're asking them to move to get a deeper sound or a higher sound or whatever, and there would be significant cost to that. And so this is an attempt to defray that cost, replace that cost for the parent. Some of the two is an equity piece. If you go to watch a band concert, you will see that if, that the students in the percussion system participate far less than anybody else because the xylophone is expensive, you've got a set of drums, and then they rotate through. Everybody else plays every piece except the percussion people. And so to me, what's in both the LMS and the, and the CHS... And so to me, what's in both the LMS and the, and the CHS band budget represents an equity piece and an attempt to, to take some of the financial burden off the families of the students who are asked to play those select expensive instruments that round out the sound and give us the, the quality of programs that we have. So there's my editorial.
So in, in these particular instruments, do we charge the student anything for the equipment? I'm just curious, because I know my daughter now is, is in the band, and, I mean, a simple thing like a flute is costing like X amount of dollars.
I don't believe we do, I can check on that.
We don't, no, no, we don't.
So is there no reason why we wouldn't like charge the student, like an average of what an instrument would cost in order for them to play, so what, they play the instrument for free?
Right, they, it's, it's a little-
So I got to ship my daughter over to the baritone thing?
Yes, and we do that with a lot of things, like even like the fax program, that teacher would like to have a charge, but right now, you know, typically, the board has not wanted to go there, you know, so just, it's an equity issue.
The lease program is an opportunity for the district to expand its inventory of musical instruments available to students that are participating versus any sort of revenue generation, so it's more, it's more-
I don't think the revenue generated is much as offsets some of the costs. Right, I mean, because everyone who's in the band right now has to pay for their equipment.
But I think it becomes, you know, again, it's like discretion of the board, if that's what you choose to do, right? Up until at the high school level, we've used it just as additional inventory.
So do they actually bring them home then? Like a xylophone, you would bring home, right? I guess that's big, right? Still would bring them home?
Yeah, we have a xylophone.
They're available to bring home, I mean, there's no restrictions because of the lease, if that's your question.
Because they have to practice.
How they administer the instruments, I'm not sure, but they're treated just like any other asset of the district by the department.
Yeah, I mean, the instruments are not cheap. If you look at this, specific line items, it's on page four.
Yep.
We have a xylophone, the bells, clarinet, and saxophone.
Really, the, the key on this, guys, is that, is in reality, this is no different than athletics, it's another, it's a co-curricular, and, and, you know, we, we, we supply the gym for the basketball team, we supply the football field for the soccer and football lacrosse teams, so I mean, this is, you know, we, we look at it, this is the, the specialty instruments that are necessary to make the music performance, you know, successful in the things that they do, and, you know, I, I personally believe that, that the more that we support the arts in those programs, the better off are all our children will be, because not, not everybody participates in sports, and, you know, I don't know how many parents are going to go out and buy a forty-seven hundred dollar piece of equipment, only to find a week later their kids say, "I don't want to play it anymore," so.
I, I agree with you. I, I do like the lease option of spreading the ten thousand out over three years or something.
It doesn't look like it's budget, you know, it's five years, twenty-seven hundred dollars, it's, it's, you know, paying three thousand dollars, I, you know. The Budget Committee is going to tell you no to leasing, aren't they?
Yes, they are.
They, they, they very stern conversation about that.
There are several members of the Budget Committee that will not-
They will not accept the lease, so-
There's no lights or sirens.
They're, they're, you know, so bringing it to them and selling it to them as a lease, not, not the strongest argument for the makeup or the present move of the Budget Committee.
And if you look at the bottom line differential here, I know some of that is made up with the math textbooks, but it's again, a pretty flat budget, and given the things you're trying to do in there.
I, I don't think you spend, I mean, really, to spend thirty-five hundred dollars to lease it is, you know, it's minimal, it's ten thousand dollars on, on a budget, and yes, it's a big line item, but I think it's a line item that's, that's-
And as Mr. Leclerc pointed out, it's kind of parallels GMS, there will be some technology requests, there will be some enhancements in terms of, of staffing, and there will be some grounds requests, but on this budget, it's pretty darn flat.
Yeah. Yeah, and then the other area there, reading, that's the same as math, where we had made a significant, some, some significant purchases last year in our alignment to curriculum, and we're still aligning and making purchases, but it's not to the degree that it was budgeted for last year.
Does anyone have anything else this time?
Nope.
Nope. All right. Thank you very much. On to-
That's a bad sign.
That's to make any reports.
He's always a bad sign, he's just making that, he's never done that before.
That's because of this.
Good job, Tom.
Brings us on to CHS Athletic requested budget.
Okay, you guys got it in front of you?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, you got any questions on page one?
Three lines in there, John, gymnastics, varsity, gymnastics and swimming, should those three be in there? We have the same issue every year, are those self-funded?
Well-
Or do you want to have that, that conversation now?
I'd just soon not have it now, if that's all right with you.
Okay, fine with me.
But, so on page one, are we good? There's a couple of things we moved on, we got some advice from Frank and Piers to beat, like the impact testing, we moved that to six fifty.
So what, I guess on page one, the four thousand eight hundred dollar increase, do you know roughly the way that's coming from? Is it the increase in officials?
It's gone about from twenty-six, seven to thirty-one, six, two, five. Yeah, most of that's come from an increase in the cost of officials, they're going from sixty-four to sixty-six for JV, per official, per contest, and from eighty-four to eighty-six, per official, per contest for every varsity game. That's, that's the most of it, and then of course, because now wrestling is, is going funded, then that's, that's going to be quite a bit of the rest of it. If you do the math, over the hundreds and hundreds of games played over the years, two dollars per official, per game adds up.
Turns out to be a lot of money.
That's, that's the most of it, I could squeeze it out if you want to know.
No, I was just curious if that's, if that's what it was.
They go up a few bucks every year.
The, are we on to page two, John?
Yes, sir, I'm ready.
Under four thirty, repairs and maintenance. Last year, we actually did a lot of repairs to some of the stuff, some of the outside equipment, the scoreboard, some other stuff, so this is just a continuation of, of, of outside equipment that really has been not maintained for a significant period of time?
Yes, sir, we, actually, last year had forty-three hundred dollars in there, and it was actually cut back to the number you see there, eighteen hundred, but the original request was forty-three hundred, and I think we got a little bit lulled to sleep because we got a brand new scoreboard, but we still got a couple that don't work. You know, one's kind of part-time work, one doesn't work at all, and one does work on these back fields, so that's what that request is for, to get those up to speed.
So last year, we got, by extending our drink contract, we got the scoreboard for free, but we found money to do all of the electrical and that sort of stuff that wasn't really in the budget, and this is just an extension of the work on, on repairing and upgrading the, the scoreboards that haven't been working on the other fields.
Right. The one on the track field has not worked in anyone's memory, that, you know, not certainly since I've been here, it's never been fixed. At some point, it did work, but it hasn't worked in the last-
Is that the one with the baseball field?
Baseball field works, softball field works, but the delay on it is ridic, it's, it's really not functional, because you'll push the button to put a run up, and it might come up five minutes later, so it's, it's not very functional. The one on the track field-
Turtles taken out there.
You're at a baseball, you're at a baseball game, you need scorecards.
I might as well have Moonlight Graham out there, you know, and then, you know, the, the one on the track field is, like I said, it's never worked back in the back of the track. When we play, historically, we play JV soccer out there, June.
When they tear down left field in Fenway, we're going to see if we can get the little signs and hang them up on the wall.
No, I was just going to ask, I know it's a little antiquated, but like, they do it little league fields, you know, with little numbers, I mean, and there's always kids, you always get, you know, ball kids for soccer games like you did yesterday. Have you ever thought of like maybe going that route, like just changing to like an old-fashioned scoreboard and have some kids just hang numbers?
We kind of sort of do that in wrestling, because we keep the score, the one that's, this, the match that's going on, we're keeping that one on the scoreboard, but then the team score, we kind of keep it on the grease, we just erase it and now it's this and that. So you, you got, you got to choose one or the other. I've seen the flip charts, you know, that's what we did last year in lacrosse, we did the flip chart.
We have to be very careful. We have a very nice scoreboard on our football field. We have to have a very nice scorecard, scoreboard on our softball field. We can't not have a working scoreboard on our softball field, but have a working scoreboard on our baseball field. Because we'll get in, somebody will tell somebody, and then we'll have to do some explaining, as they say, so.
The papers will call.
We need to get our scoreboards fixed so that they work, you know, very adequate-
Is twenty-five hundred dollars going to be able to fix the scoreboard, though?
Well, there's always money.
Extend that contract to co-call for fifteen years, then donate another one.
Maybe Pepsi will do that one.
That would be interesting.
We have a problem, we need a lawyer then.
No, you need a VA, just because they can't, save your money on the lawyer.
Save your money.
All right.
We can't disclose the, the contract, and that's probably the, the problem.
Okay, we go to page two?
Except for the fourteen thousand dollar increase in supplies.
So I was looking at historicals, it was pretty much consistent thirty-two, thirty-two. We cut it, looks like, last year to twenty-four, I don't remember why, do you remember why we cut it last year?
Which line?
Supplies. It's like thirty-two, thirty-two, thirty-one, twenty-four.
Yeah, I want to talk about that.
And then jumped to the thirty-nine, I'm also, I'm wondering, could we get by just going back to the thirty-two, thirty-two, thirty-two? Not, not cut your way back to what you were last year, but go back to historical average, maybe?
I like the way you think, and of course, I'm, I'm going, I'm putting in thirty-nine, and again, there's a couple of things, you know, one, you know, the wrestling piece wasn't in there in the past, so that, that is certainly an addition there. Yeah, I don't recall why we went back to twenty-four last year exactly, but that's what was approved. Just so you know, we're down, we haven't fired a shot for winter or spring sports, and we got like sixty-five hundred dollars left in supplies, so we're going to have to be creative down the stretch here.
Down the stretch, you have to round in the corner.
We ain't got second base yet.
Scratch, that's like, that's like April.
So we underbudgeted.
Right, but again, we'll, you know, I'm not happy, but we'll, you know, team play, we'll figure it out.
So, John, if we go to page three and look at six fifty software, that forty-two hundred dollars of the forty-seven hundred dollar increase says it moves from-
We're in page four, is that right, Doc?
Yes, sorry, page four, thank you. It says it was moved, it was moved from six-ten.
Right.
So if six-ten last year was, had that included.
Actually, this is the first year we purchased that product, it might be a typo there, we, this is the first year we've purchased this product, it's called Huddle Software. What Huddle does, a lot of teams exchange film this way now, it's a software product, so if we say, we're going to exchange, you know, tape in football or basketball with another school, we just give them our account, and they can activate our game tape, and that keeps you from having to drive and physically trade a tape and so on. It's also very advantageous for teaching, and we bought the, the whole package, in the past, football was the only sport that used it, and they used it, they bought out their own personal supply budget and/or their fundraising budget, but we have the ability this year to expand it for the whole program. At the preseason coaches meeting, I said, could the golf coach, could it be advantageous to the golf coach to use the tape to analyze the kid's swing, the videotaped analysis? Yes. Would the basketball coach use it to exchange film or to, or to create a recruiting tape to help a child, you know, you know, get recruited to play college, where you can make highlights, you can do the biomechanical analysis through the swing, for any sport, and some people will use it more than others, but some of that's the, how ambitious the coach is and how technologically savvy they are and so on. So it, it does have application for, for every sport, and from teaching to scouting to college recruitment, it's, it's fast. And it, that's kind of where this whole thing's going, sports in America.
To the chair to answer your question, Mr. Barker, that, that supply line for athletics and CHS was, it had two reductions, one of forty-two hundred, which was the reduction that was equated to the self-funded programs that we-
Oh, yeah.
Superintendent discussed, and then forty-seven, twenty-five was another superintendent reduction, again, just, just based on-
I'll probably have one of the line items upstairs.
So that was, that was almost nine thousand dollars between those two reductions.
Thank you.
And there was some offset to that, the reasoning for it was, there was some offset in, in athletic transportation, that historically is unexpected, because again, the budget sets up the team to go from beginning to end, including all, all, post, postseason.
I guess you're a, you had a plan for worst-case scenario, or, or best case, but you look at it from winning a title, yeah.
I guess I'm, and I'm, I'm bringing this up, but I'm not picking on CHS, because I think this goes across all three schools. All three schools have organizations that are fairly successful at raising funds, whatever those funds are, and, and more and more things are being pushed to us, pushed to the budget. Destination Imagination and all these things. And yet, we continually see the programs come home for the fundraisers, the boosters clubs doing their fundraisers and stuff, and I, and I, I'm, I'm concerned in the sense that money is being raised through the district, through our students in the district, and we have no idea where it's going and what's being moved to the taxpayers, and any reasons why these things are being, you know, is it, you know, it could be as simple as, as, you know, and, and not, again, I'm going to use the boosters, not, just not to pick on them, but maybe they, they're dwindling, they don't have the wherewithal to continue the, the process and what, and, and so I'm, I'm, I would encourage the superintendent to maybe encourage the principals, the athletic directors, and the people that are interchanging with these departments to give us some idea of what's occurring with their fundraising efforts and where they believe those funds are going to be going, and, you know, in this case, what's coming to us, because I, I think we have to be able to explain, you know, what's going on, I mean, I know we took on wrestling, but at the same time, the idea was that the wrestling boosters were going to continue and work and, and do some things, and that I know they have the football boosters, and I think lacrosse tied themselves in with, with wrestling here. So I guess, you know, there needs to be some explanation of where all these funds, I mean, it's, it's no, I think, I think my concern is it's no different than the check accounts that we have at the various schools, when they get substantial amounts of money put in for various organizations, classes, and things like that, 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 you know, what is the control on those things? Now, we, I know we have no control of the monies or where they, they send it as far as the, the fundraising groups, but it would be nice to know that, you know, this is their plan for fifteen, sixteen, and, you know, this is where they're looking for- but it would be nice to know that, you know, this is their plan for fifteen, sixteen, and, you know, this is where they're looking for, the school board to ask the taxpayers to step in, and this is what they're going to be looking to do as far as, as supporting the athletic programs, or, or not. Or, you know, friends of music, whatever the different, different programs may be.
If I may, um, everything that they make in fundraising goes into their club account, and so, there is a policing of it, and then when we say, coach goes, you know, I really wanna buy, um, a one-man block and sled, cause they, they, okay, fine, well, it's probably not, it's pretty substantial capital expenditure, so you probably wouldn't do that out of your budget, cause you need that for, you know, six pairs of shoulder pads a year, and, you know, twelve new game balls, or whatever you're gonna buy. That runs out pretty quick, so that's kind of a, a want versus a need, you, you'd like to have it. So, so he takes that money, it's out of his club account that he's raised from parking cars at a NASCAR thing, or a cash calendar, or whatever, things that, and, and there is a, a check and balance that, where, where'd the money come in, what it's for, and where did it go? What was it spin off? Don't have it, it didn't show up on here, but we can get access to that, it's not, there's no, um, we're transparent there. So that would be one thing. Other things, like, say, the basketball coach, he wants to take the team to Kentucky, well, that's not a budgetary item. So, they're raising money to take, uh, so that those kids will have, um, this experience that's, that's so much more than basketball. You know, they're gonna tour colleges, you'll see college practices, they're gonna, you know, see a different part of the country, it's kind of a, you know, very broad experience for them, not just an athletic experience. So, that, those are just a couple of examples. If we ever wanna see exactly, I'd be, we'd be happy to get shared.
I mean, I, I mean, it would be, it would, you know, I don't know if it's, if it's, if it's necessary, that's just my thoughts, but.
Yeah, I'd be curious too, and it's funny you bring it up, John, because I've, I've spoken to a couple of football players and a couple of baseball players who, who fundraised, and I asked them, where's the money go? What's it for? And they all said the same thing, I don't know.
That's a good answer.
So, and then I asked, I asked like the kids playing baseball, I, I mean, what do you need? I mean, you, you have your own glove, you have a uniform, you, baseball is a supply, you have your own bat, so what do you raise money for?
Well.
I mean, that's, baseball is just one example, and I'm.
The last couple of jerseys that baseball has purchased has come out of their fundraising, but wasn't a budgetary item. In fact, Jimmy told me the other day that it had been many years since, um, anything bought for baseball that was budgetary, and he's never asked for anything either. So, I said, well, you need to remind me of that, cause, uh, you need to be next up on getting a new, at least a top, or a, you know, or a pant. I, I think that you, if, if you really broke it down, and, and you would find that most of our teams are not, I would say, firstly, all of our teams are not fully funded. They're partially funded. What we give them on the supply line per sport is not gonna come close to paying the bills for these sports, particularly sports like football, where there is, it costs three grand a year just to get the helmets reconditioned and shoulder pads, you don't do that, you're in a liability situation, you don't have a leg to stand on. So, right out, whatever we got down on this paper for our football budget, three thousand's going to reconditioning right off the bat. And you don't have, you don't have a choice, it's gotta be NOXY approved, okay? So, with that said, we know that what we give them is not gonna be close to enough. We also know what it takes to run the ship, and so they, they have to raise the money to fill in the gaps. So, when a kid says, I don't know, that's not a bad answer for a kid to say, he doesn't know, he just knows that we, we have what we need, and what budget doesn't cover that our fundraising.
That might be a good idea to educate.
If we wanna know.
It might be a good idea though, to educate the athlete who is out there collecting money, so they know where the money's going.
Okay, sure, like, I know baseball last year, to, to your point, baseball last year, the, the warm-up tops that they got, well, you know, they change every year because of the kid's sizes and, you know, okay, we're gonna raise money for the tops, you get to keep the top, that's a fundraiser, you've raised the money for it, we're gonna buy them as a team, you get to keep it, that's fine. You can't walk out with a batting helmet because that was purchased by a budget item.
Understandable.
See what I'm saying? Okay.
So, can we just go back to, um, the six-ten supply line, the thirty-nine thousand, three-twenty-five? That number is actually, so you need to add that forty-three hundred dollars from the software that was moved, correct?
No, cause it's never.
Would you say you've never had it?
It's never had it, yeah.
So it's never moved, alright. Are we on to page five at this point?
I'm ready to go to five, you ready to go to five? There's a fees, you know, it went up a little bit, you know, sports went up a little bit more per sport, and again, the wrestling piece is gonna be added in there, um, so, you know, that's, that's why that went up a little bit, if you wanted to know. Also, you know, the tournaments, you know, special tournaments and competition, you know, there are a lot of tournaments in wrestling, they have like a inter-scholastic match during the week, and usually on the weekend, they go to a tournament. Well, I think wrestling alone, we paid, uh, about a thousand dollars in tournaments, but last year they paid it because it was self-funded, so that's gonna be absorbed in there. And so that's, again, why you see those increases, like that last line, under eight-ten, where it says special tournaments and competition, that's up eleven-hundred from last year, and that's almost completely reflected by wrestling being added. Again, so, uh, I think Mr. York mentioned earlier, you know, since wrestling is, is gonna be funded, we expect them to be fully funded, no, they're, they're still gonna keep raising money. We've got, uh, we rewarded the state wrestling meet this year, we expect to make six to eight thousand dollars in one day, if we do what we're supposed to do. That's cause we, we bid on it, or we, we put in a, a proposal to get this Division III state meet, never had it, we worked, we put together a proposal, uh, we, we, we won it, and, uh, Wyndham has made between six and eight thousand dollars in a one-day event.
We have a small venue, so hopefully, you know, it's gonna have to work like clockwork, cause Wyndham has a much better, you know, bigger gym, but as long as we do everything right, we can keep that.
It's, we got it for two years, if we do, do well, we can reapply. I think there's some things about our gym, number one, we had to be able to put three mats in there, we figured out we could do that, you know, door opens from the back door right in the cafeteria, that's a good thing, if you're ready to sell a bunch of food, you better have breakfast, lunch, and dinner, cause you're gonna saddle up for about sixteen hours that day. So, um, again, a lot of work, but that's an example of how we still continue to work, sir.
It's gonna smell nice in there.
Well, the cafeteria, we try to cook a lot of good food to offset the smell that's going on.
You get battle right there at the door.
Sixteen hours of wrestlers.
Yeah, it'll be alright, pretty ripe by the end of the day, bro.
Should be the top of sport.
Are there any other, uh, are we ready to go down self-funded, or we have any questions on that?
Is the transportation increases, is that all due to the increase in, um, the contract, or is some, in some of the wrestling, some of it more meets?
Six grand of the wrestling. Six grand of the wrestling.
Yeah.
Some of it's due to the increase.
Alright.
Yep, again, that, uh, experienced a fifteen percent increase, so a part of it would be there, and then the additional services you provided to wrestling.
I think it's exciting that they, uh, they, they have wrestling postseason transportation charges, yet they're hosting the tournament. They have to drive her, they have to drive her out and get the flyers.
There's the meat of champions that happens after.
Right, yeah, and your point's well taken, that might be one we won't have to worry about the next two years, but there is still, that's pretty good, I like that.
But, uh, speaking, speaking of transportation, um, so this is something that we've talked a, a lot about in the last four years, is, you know, exploring the option of getting, you know, a minivan, a mini bus, uh, you know, at the cross-country meet, a, a couple of weeks ago, we saw a lot of mini buses. And, uh, with our VOK transportation, we have issues, um, we're, we're over-expending our budget in athletics, like golf. So if we could, if, if we really could explore what it would cost for insurance, for a driver, I think we would save, you know, thousands of dollars.
Right, it, it seems ludicrous to put, you know, six golfers on a full-size bus, you know, there's gotta be a better way. And then there's, you would think that, again, we, that, that fifteen-passenger van could be running most of the day, running VOK kids, you know, hither and yon, and, uh, you know, we got a field trip, you know, it goes to Nashua, to a museum, we got it with another department, I, I think it would be something certainly worthy of discussion. I, I know it's been done in other parts of the, of the country, and, uh, gosh, when I first started out, it seemed like, you know, we did a lot more of it, and I was, and I think it's, it's something, this should be at least given some.
This is an area that we've had some discussion, it started in my, probably my first month here, um, uh, we had at the high school level, with, between the director of guidance and the principal, looking at, uh, the dilemma of, of providing, um, vocational, um, services to students, so requesting that were not able to be delivered here at CHS, and needed to be delivered at other schools, such as Pembroke and, and Nashua and others. And that, that area seems to be expanding. So, to the extent that we've given a lot of discussion to potentially having our own vans, because even though a van would, would sound good, you still need the backup. So, it's, it's, I suspect the proposal wouldn't be prepared for this budget cycle.
Right.
But I think if we, as, as a group, whether it be CHS and pot, pot, potentially the other two schools as well participating in the use of that, if we were to present to the board a proposal to bring onboard our own transportation and be able to offset that with the savings, so, so, by not utilizing. Right now, uh, we're looking at, at projected costs for this year, just in transportation for vocational students, around seventy-one thousand dollars. That is approximately twenty-six thousand dollars over our allocated budget for that. So, we met today and plan to meet again next week to look at some alternative strategies, so that we're not gonna be able, the, the budget won't need to absorb, uh, that substantial increase. And again, it's, it's a, it's a result of more students participating in vocational programs outside of the walls of CHS.
And we pay for a bus for transportation, is it straight cost or is it by the hour?
Depends on the company.
For a student, um, the previous contract was both, uh, hour rate and distance, now we're just simply, uh, clocking out, and it, uh, it, there's no mileage, it's just simply a timeout.
So it's by the hour?
That appears that's gonna save us some money, that's, we're gonna get windfall on that.
I'm just thinking too, and I know that sometimes it's like a little bonus for them, but, um, when a team stops at McDonald's, type thing. They're paying by the hour, so it's taking like another hour to have them stop at McDonald's rather than come straight back to the school.
Valid point, certainly, if we wanna put a rule in saying there's no stopping, if you, you wanna eat on the way back, pack your lunch. I think that began with the fact that a lot of these kids hadn't eaten since noon, and it might be eight-thirty at night, and maybe every child doesn't have the opportunity to have, somebody at home is gonna pack them a lunch, so, okay, so we're gonna, if you wanna bring something, fine, but we will stop briefly and get, I think that's how that idea got started. So, um, you know, there, there's other things we could do, we could, we could contract the cafeteria to pack every kid a lunch for them, uh, buck, buck and a half, no, we've done that.
They grill chicken.
I mean, no, no, we got the, you know, jelly and peanut butter, and a, and an apple, and, and a bottle of water, it'll knock the edge off till you get home.
I'm not, I'm not saying that not some circumstances where they should stop, but I mean, when kids are stopping at six o'clock at night, you know, that type of thing.
I agree. We, we, if you guys wanna consider a proposal to say, you know, unless it's over this amount of time, it's, it's not worthy of stopping, I'm not opposed to that. And that, and we can get the team moms and dads to, okay.
I'm just thinking how many bus, just thinking how many bus trips there are in the course of a year, I mean, it's quite a few.
You make a very valid point. Would this be an appropriate time for me to, uh, plant a seed for future consideration?
Sure.
Okay. This is the fifth year that we've been in a co-op venture, ice hockey with, uh, Pembroke Academy. On average, our students that participate are pretty much, um, in for fifteen to sixteen hundred dollars to participate. Hockey people tell me that's not an exorbitant amount of money, if you're a hockey person, it sounds like a lot to me. Pretty much, there's, there's school cost, and then there's what they call booster's cost, the school cost is about half, um, and then the other part comes, the booster cost comes down to what they pay for ice time and things like that. I would just like to put, as a matter of record, to say that they've done their five years, not in this budget cycle, but in, in the future, I'd like to be considered for at least partial funding, to be considered of our students to play hockey in this co-op venture with Pembroke.
Fully noted.
Thank you. Thank you.
You can go, John, you're done.
For early, early tee times. Any questions? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Patience.
Next up is CHS.
Save the best for last, remember that, huh?
Let's move on to pages.
I wanna start by, um, thanking Frank, uh, all of our department heads, CS, and leaders actually had a budget session with Frank. He went over the budget process, uh, the seminar gave everyone a lot of really good insight. Some of the things that he asked people to do is come up with a three-to-five-year plan, always blinker before the turn, try to get out what you really need, so, uh, so if, if it does get caught, school board members and budget members know that it was something that we, that we did wanna put out there, that is something that we, we did need. Also, I wanted to let everyone know that Jody's here, because, uh, she's, again, she's getting her master's degree in, uh, administration, and part of her, uh, training is she gets to, um, work with me on the budget. So, she's had a lot of fun.
What a bonus.
Yeah.
You get credit for that at least.
Okay, so, so, um, if we wanna start with, uh, these are the increases, general supplies, um, according to our numbers, we're gonna be about five-hundred-and-fifteen students. We also have, we have over sixty staff, we've moved to a, a lot of, um, part-time teachers, which has been a, a good thing, but there's also a, a greater need when you have, um, a lot of different people in the building, and, um, plus the inflation rate was two-point-one percent, so that's how we came up with, uh, that number.
Laurie, how does, what's the rationale for part-time teachers costing?
Just using more resources.
Or for general supplies, why would that be?
Why would they? Because they all have their own, you know, they, I think that, you know, if you have two teachers versus you have four teachers, there's gonna be more supplies used.
Why?
Just for, you know, the creativity and different things they're gonna do in their classes, they're gonna want their own, uh, you know, copies of different things, so. I would say, I would say, you know, if I looked at copying, and we looked at, you know, if you had two Spanish teachers versus four Spanish teachers, I think there would be an increase.
Yeah, but, yeah, the, the, the teaching aside.
Yes.
In two thousand thirteen, you spent thirteen thousand dollars. Then you went to twenty. And you spent eighteen. You have an approved budget of twenty-three for this year.
Yep.
And you're, you have all the large classes in the school.
Right.
Today.
Right, yes.
And you believe it's necessary to jump five thousand dollars. And all the other schools are pretty much level funding that process.
It's ten thousand more than the actual the year before, so that's a three-point-two increase in, three-point-two percent increase in students and a fifty-three percent increase in budget from the last year's actual that we have. I mean, that's the sort of thing that the budget committee's gonna look at, you know, I mean, we look at GMS and LMS coming at a point-one, point-two percent, and then we look at twenty-seven percent increase in athletics and a fifty-four percent increase in general supplies. And that's, it gets hard to defend quite honestly.
Can I just jump it? On your list of increases, there's a lot of textbooks, and I just asked that question before us.
Right, so, so, um.
Eighteen thousand, seventeen thousand, nine thousand?
Yep, so I know that, um, the, um, Yep. So I know that, um, the, um, the social studies textbooks, those are on the cycle. That's on the cycle for Julie Heon. But we did have, um, other places that would not be on the cycle. So for example, um, if you look at world languages, we're looking, they have not had a textbook emplacement since two thousand and eleven. They requested textbooks in two thousand and eleven and then they stopped requesting textbooks because they got cut. So now we, again, we have, um, part-time teachers who, uh, this is their first budget cycle and they came in with requesting those needs.
So, but aren't they supposed to go through Julie Heon at this point? I thought this is going to.
These would be replacements.
Yeah, but it's, 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 um, it's, it's not, it's not, um, it's not replacements. If, if you look to upgrade your books in two thousand and eleven and were told no for whatever the reasons were.
Yes.
It's not a replacement. It's, it's a, it, it's a process that needs to go through, through Julie. Isn't that correct? Isn't that what the, Derek, you were that?
We approve, yeah.
Pretty much how the board had.
I think, I think social studies is on the cycle this year.
But anybody that's looking to either upgrade or replace all their books had to go through.
Yeah, Perk approves the selection.
So, I, I think that, I think those things need to be removed. I mean, if it's a worn-out book and you're replacing a worn-out book, that, that's, that's not through Julie. But if you're, if you have a, a class or set of curriculum that's looking to change out their books, then I, I believe it needs to go and be part of Julie's budget because she told us that's how the process was going to work. So it shouldn't be part of CHS budget. So it should, it should get removed and then get discussed out with Julie and, and Lori. And then when it comes back to us, we'll know what they decided and how they worked it out.
Right. Cause we've increased, like for example, we've gone from ten Spanish classes to thirteen Spanish classes. Our, our enrollments are going up. We're looking at, uh, in, in French, we went from a full-time teacher to a halftime teacher. But, uh, students are now very engaged in French. So we're looking at a first-year French teacher who has some, some needs. The past teacher didn't, you know, request or, or have the needs.
I, I don't know where we are.
Well, I'll, I'll just.
If we're jumping around.
No, we shouldn't jump around. That was just a question. So let's go back to, um, art education. Art education is this next place where we went up and Denise Freeman has asked for cameras. We do digital photography now and, uh, it's, it's a course that we approved. And so, um, she would like to have three cameras. They're, um, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars each. And the rationale is that it is in the course of studies for two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen years. And, um, you know, she, there are students that are not able to afford to bring a digital camera. And so these would be loner cameras that would be used on contract, like, just like musical instruments. And, um, that's why she's requesting that we have those.
And that, that course was approved by, the, the change in the course was approved by the school board. And I've actually, uh, been in her class when she's, and I do a little digital photography. But they were talking in the class about not just, you know, the content and the composition of the photo, but they're talking about, you know, the, whether or not they're using automatic settings versus raw settings and really some very sophisticated things. So they can't use a two hundred and fifty dollar camera. And we do have students who, who do not have access. So this is, this is, uh, a purchase that I would really support. It's a change. We will save money on chemicals. We had that discussion when we moved to the, the program to digital. This is necessary, I think, to support and make, support students who don't have access to their own. And, uh, I think that, given the requirements of the course and what these kids, she's expecting these kids to do in their photography. I think it's, it's a reasonable request, quite honestly. Took about twelve seconds for it to be over my head. That was back in September, so.
Okay. And then, um, these are consumables, consumables, the English education vocabulary workbooks.
Which page is that?
Oh, so this would be page five.
Sorry.
So, uh, we've spent a lot of time talking about senior English. We've talked about senior English at the board level. We have redesigned senior English. Um, one of the things that the teachers worked on this summer is, is the, you know, revised curriculum. And part of that is they're asking for vocabulary books for senior English now. In, in the past, we were not doing vocab in senior English. Um, so these would be, um, you know, a, a change to, uh, increase the rigor in senior English. And then also, um, under English, uh, under new textbooks, uh, again, the, this would be out of our circle. And this is why we have it in here, is, um, we redesigned all of English. So, uh, Patrick Keefe is the new CF for English. And, uh, part of, um, you know, the direction was, uh, what do we need to do to be more aligned in English? What are the anthologies we need to have? And how can we be in compliance? How can we add more rigor to the courses that we're teaching? And, and to do that, we would need these, um, new textbooks that clearly would still need to go through PERC, but this would be looking ahead.
Lori, the sixth hand line, the supplies. What does the one fifty, one sixty, one sixty, and one sixty refer to for the vocabulary workbooks?
That would look, so that we were saying one fifty, oh, those are the number of students. That, I, I know that we have less than that many students, but they said that they always over because sometimes students take them home, lose them. So they over, they over budget there. I mean, obviously I don't think they're gonna have, uh, you know, forty kids lose books, but they always wanna have extras.
Okay, but we only got a hundred and fifteen kids, a hundred and four kids as juniors next year and we're ordering a hundred and sixty books. That would be a lot of extra books. And we'd ordered extra books last year. Did anybody do an inventory to see how many extra books we had left over from last year?
Yeah, we did actually do an inventory.
Okay. It just seems awfully high.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I can ask Patrick Keefe why he over, over, uh, why he did so many. I know, I know we, we discussed him doing extra cause he said that sometimes they lose, but he, that's a, that's a lot of extra.
Yeah, that's like forty percent of the class losing their book.
Right. Okay, so then, um, physical education. If we go to physical education.
Which, did we skip?
Um, world language we talked about.
So those.
Those are the replacement books. Remember, um.
Those are just new books you need because there's more kids and.
Yep, there's more kids. There's, there's three type, um, part-time teachers and, uh, they, I, I don't know, um, why, uh, the old French teacher or, um, you know, why they didn't require, but these teachers, when I met with them, this is what they wanted and this is what they asked for. So that's why I.
Going back, well, just going back to page five real quick.
Okay.
Maybe I missed it. So, the textbook replacement and the textbooks news. Okay, the textbook replacements I'm okay with. Textbooks new.
Yes.
So, uh, question to the superintendent. All new books such as this, are these, are, is this line item moving to Julie?
That was my understanding. And that was the question that I asked, uh, Mr. Lackler and Mr. Thompson tonight, and they indicated that they were.
All right, so, so.
Object code six forty-one, my understanding is anything six forty-one, object code textbook new would be under the district wide, uh, under Dr. Heon's.
All right, so, so this one should become zero. The seventy-seven eleven should become zero.
And then it'll be transferred.
It may, it'll come back to here at some point in time.
The next cycle of review from the budget, superintendent, recommend a budget.
Well, actually it should come back, it should come back in a breakdown of Julie's budget.
Right. Which just went up another seven thousand.
Well, no, because I, because she's, cause she said that her number was accurate based on what she saw in the three schools. So if that's the case, then when she comes back, instead of having, I, I don't know if anybody went back and looked at her line item sixty-five. She has a very detailed explanation of what it is. Explaining to us why it's sitting there now. But, so when, when the budget comes back from the superintendent to us, the breakdown in there should now be, you know, this line at LMS with the dollar amount appropriated to it, that equals sixty-five or whatever the number is. So we can see it, so we know where it's going to end up. Um.
Would it be even more detailed than that? Wouldn't be at LMS, it would be like, like you see here, CHS, physical education, six forty-one.
Yeah, it should be, it should be, it, yeah, it shouldn't be LMS. It should be history in LMS. It should be English that, then, I mean, it doesn't, I don't, I think that, um, the explanations that, um, uh, that Lori has here under six forty-one textbooks new, she should leave her explanation.
Yeah.
There. It should be there so the budget can be asked a question. We can always refer them back to this page so they can see the actual detail behind it. But the line item should be zero.
Right. It'd be in district wide.
All right, so.
Okay, so, physical education.
Did we skip foreign language?
World language.
Please go over that one.
Page seven. Line six forty, which went up sixty-nine hundred dollars.
Right. So that was, um, we have, um, this year we have one full-time Spanish teacher, two part-time Spanish teacher who, one of them teaches AP. And then we went from a full-time French teacher to a part-time French teacher. We've increased our Spanish program from ten classes to thirteen classes. Right now, we're looking at, um, at least fifteen students in the AP Spanish program, which would, um, for us to offer AP Spanish, we must, our teacher just went and got trained. We have to offer the two thousand and fourteen edition of the, uh, AP Spanish textbooks.
So, so these books presently don't exist in the district?
No, we use, um, we use an AP, um, Spanish book, but it's, it's, it's out of date. So for us to use.
So again, this one should go to Julie.
So this one should move from six forty to six forty-one.
Right.
And back over to, I mean, I, I would encourage, um, this explanation to move down to six forty-one. The dollars to be zero, but the, and be moved over to Julie's line. On, on, on this budget line, six forty.
Well, it, if it's gonna remain under CHS in notes, it needs to go to six forty-one.
That's what I'm saying. It should move to six forty-one.
Okay, I misunderstood.
Yeah, it should move to six forty-one.
And for the line appropriation, the, under district wide.
Right, and the rev, but the expense should move to, to Julie.
Yep.
Okay. So are we on physical education? So under physical education, um, physical education is actually physical education and health. So we never have, it's separated. We teach every student at Campbell High School has to take a half year of health and then they have to take a year and a half in, in physical education. So, um, last year, we had major cuts in physical education. And then what happened, um, there was almost two thousand dollars cut. Shannon has to take the cut because we, we, um, do continue to run the ropes course and, and we do talk about the ropes course. The ropes course is run in, um, the freshman physical education class. It's also run for freshman seminar. We do a, a part on a, a venture. And at some point in time, we'd like to, to offer an ELO or bring back adventure. To do that, we have, um, you know, mandated, uh, updates that we have to do to the ropes course and we have to have certain harnesses and certain ropes. So, um, so this is why, um, when you look at the physical education budget, um, she's putting in things that she, she asked for last year that, that were actually cut. So she's just re.
Lori, the last two years, I think the board.
Fifteen hundred dollars it was.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, fifteen hundred, yeah.
And it was specifically the, the rope stuff. But it's been in here every year. You've requested every year and it's been cut every year. And now we're reaching the point where if we don't fund it this year, essentially all those program elements have to go away. Is that not correct?
That, well, that's where I, I think we would be really close to that. So, um, the way that the ropes course was explained to me, um, from Coach K is that the town actually owns the ropes course. So it's the town of Litchfield who owns that. Then the town has some equipment and the school has some equipment. And then the town and the school have made some kind of agreement with the ropes course. We don't actually own the ropes course, but the, it was part of, um, when Campbell High School was founded, that, uh, it was a vision that ropes and adventure would be a part of, of Campbell High School. And so the town maintains a certain part of the ropes course. We maintain a certain part. We store the town's equipment here. Our equipment's here.
So, um, can we request the administration to have a conversation with Jason Hope? And ask him to take over the ropes course? They will store their stuff, they maintain it.
Well, we, we still need to maintain, like, the, I mean, the harness and stuff. Our, our students are wearing the harness.
Well, I mean, our stuff, that our equipment, yes, but the actual maintenance of the ropes course, cause it's on their property also. It's on their, their, their. So, I, I would imagine that.
But we, we pay, we've been the ones who've been paying the inspection fee. I mean, we, is it, does it get used, Lori, besides us? Or are we the primary users?
Uh, homeschoolers use it.
Yes, homeschoolers use it. I, I know that there's, uh, you know, adventure, you know, uh, I think Alvin High School had their teachers maybe use it through the town. I mean, there, I think there are people that do use it. We used it in the past, ourselves as a school.
We wanna move that to the town, if we can. I, I think they'll take it if, if we ask them to. I, I think they'll maintain it.
The inspection fee and the main, maintenance fee?
I think so. It's there, it's, ideally, they're responsible for, for the process. So, I mean, whether, whether it's happened through the high school or whether it happens through the SAU office, there ought to be a conversation about that. And you may be bringing it up with Frank at, at the budget meeting.
Well, I don't know. It's always some cool money. I don't know if it matters, does it?
Well, that's one, what it, no, it does, but it, it removes, we don't own it.
Yeah.
It's not our responsibility. So we don't actually want to have our insurance exposed to it. As long as we maintain part of it, they, somebody could get injured and sue both the town and the school. Even though we had nothing to do with giving them permission to be on the ropes course. Because we are being, we're involved in.
But do we know if they're using our equipment?
Well.
If they're not using our equipment, if it, if it's, if it's their course and they're not using the harnesses and stuff that we own, then I would think the liability would be all the town.
Yeah, they must have a, they must have liability insurance for the parts.
If we paid for the inspection of the ropes course.
That we do for us.
We own the ropes course. If it failed, whether they used their own harnesses or the town's harnesses, because we had it inspected.
Do you know, Lori, who, who you've been working with at the town side?
Coach K has been, you know, I, um, you know, requested a meeting with him to just go back through and try to figure out, like, you know, so we use the ropes course, but at the town of Litchfield owns the ropes course, but we inspect the ropes course and we maintain it. But according to Coach K, that was an agreement that the town made like in nineteen ninety-nine. But I do think that, you know, it's something that we could go back and say to the town, we'd really like you to maintain, it's their course. We'd like to use it.
Do you know if it falls under the rec department?
I think it falls under the.
Jason, do you know that?
It's in both budgets.
It's in both budgets.
Town has their line in it and you guys, we've never resolved it. We've talked about this every year.
Maybe we can try to resolve that this year then.
Lori, if you can get ahold of Coach K and find out, you know, what time he has perhaps next week, then maybe.
With Jason Oaks?
Yeah. Well, if we can just backfill me on the course, and then so we'll know what questions to ask Jason when we meet with him.
I don't know if you have to go to that extent. I think if you just call him and tell him, this is what the school board is thinking, your thoughts on it. They'll move, they'll move. They'll move, they'll move, you know, whatever process makes most sense. I mean, I, I don't think you need to get a lot of people involved. I think if you get the administrator of the town involved and tell them what the board is thinking, that you can resolve this in a couple of phone calls.
Alright, let me see what I can do.
Because, just remember, nineteen ninety-nine, there's nobody from the town side to conflict or either, either confirm nor deny what we're being told by Coach K. So, I mean, so whatever information you have now, you have to assume is correct. We just want to change that.
Okay, so, when you look at Physical Education, she does have two new RAD suits. RAD is a relatively new course. And she has many students who are trying to get into the course. It's actually filled. And she's also asking for fitness gram software, for, for students to track their wellness throughout their, you know, physical education experience. It's a web-based, and it gives them actual fitness results. So, so those are things that, that she's looking for. And also, our mats, she's asking to replace ten mats that are over ten years old. So that, that's where her increases have come from. You know, there's a few minor things in health, videos on drugs.
Lori, the RAD Student Simulation Suits, is that six forty-two for one or six forty-two for two?
For two.
So we've got two in this year's budget, and we want an additional two for next year as well, so we would have four?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And in the past, she's, she's borrowed them from Concord High School. Concord High School has a RAD class, and so she's, you know, lives near Concord, and she's made some arrangements. So now, facts, the, this is obviously a very high number, but we've asked for the Reality Babies almost every single year. And currently, she had two babies, but they're, neither of the babies are working. And according to Ms. Nagy, they're so old that it wouldn't be worth trying to, it's better to replace them. I, you know, when I met with her, I discussed only having five Reality Babies, cutting it back to five. But, you know, for her large classes, to have five, five babies would be better than nothing. But if she had ten babies, they could really be a useful resource for her. And so, so that's, you know, clearly a, a large increase on, on that. It's, it is something that we have continually asked for, because right now, they currently carry flour around as their babies. And the other increases, in fact, also come down to, you know, there's a lot of equipment. She's asking for, you know, six food processors. A, a lot of things are now, need to be replaced. And her freezer is, is also two thousand dollars. And she said that the seals on the freezers, you know, don't work. So, so she's asking for that as a, as an additional increase. So her budget is, is, you know, actually up, you know, almost to ten thousand dollars. She, she also asked for, you know, a textbook, which I know would go under Julie Heon, because she's in a dual enrollment situation.
For the increase in supplies, does that kind of bring her up to where she needs to be? I know every year.
Yeah, every year, that's what, the supplies, I actually, I cut her supplies a little bit. I did try to, to bring things back. One of the questions that she, she said that she could live, she actually asked for three dollars and fifty cents per student because she wanted to, you know, be able to have more creative cooking than general. And again, the question that she would like to, to ask the school board, you know, would it be okay to, you know, ask students to have a small amount that they pay, you know, fifteen dollars a year? So, you know, she could be more creative, you know, she, she wanted three fifty, I put it to two fifty. Just trying to, I knew that we were asking for the, for the babies and.
I know that if, if you've been doing any grocery shopping and seeing the price of fresh food over the last several years, and we, we know that the last several years, Jody, correct me if I'm wrong. Jody? Jody?
Jody.
The cooking classes have been oversubscribed every year that I've been here by a significant margin?
Well, they, they've certainly had the requests, not that they've been fulfilled, but yes, the requests certainly have been there.
And it is a real opportunity for these kids to learn how to cook fresh rather than processed foods, and give them eating habits and cooking skills that will get them away from processed foods. And, you know, trying to do that and teach at the same time, and do it for two dollars and fifty cents a meal. You know, this is one of these cases where I just look at it and say, the, the potential value of this is far more than, than that additional. So, I mean, I'd be even supportive of pushing it to the three fifty instead of the two fifty.
She'd be happy, because I, I do, I didn't want to jeopardize the baby, so I cut the food.
The baby's been already in jeopardy.
Yeah. Every year, they're in jeopardy. So do you want me to rewrite that? No, okay.
I'm saying I'm supportive of it. If you put it back in, then the board will have their say when it gets to them.
Okay.
But I, it's, I think that will also help the, the address issue. When you start adding fees to, to courses, then it becomes tricky because you're, you're starting to say, okay, well, those of you who have, you know, a few more dollars and throw in fifteen dollars, then you can add these additional things to your whatever meal. And then you're separating kids cooking in the same room. To me, if, if we're going to do this course and do it right, and all it is, is a dollar per student more per meal, then. I've been wrong before. But I think it, it's something that I, I really believe is, is worth putting in the budget.
So, what's not in the budget, I just wanted to, additional equipment for tech ed. Chuck Moore did ask for a controlled overhead router that sends the design to the machine. It, it would be a very expensive piece of equipment, but it, it would increase what their ability and what they can do. I did cut that, but I just wanted for your own benefit to see that I did cut that. And it's something that, you know, would be on his, his wish list, if there was such a thing.
What was it, Lori, I'm sorry?
The, the controlled overhead router.
It's on here.
It's a piece of equipment that, that is, it's actually a design piece. And it's, it's a, it's very amazing piece of equipment. But it's something that at this point in time, I didn't think we should keep in the budget, but I just wanted you to see it. So, it was there. The, there is no, for AP mats, Statistics textbooks, that that is in Julie's budget. I, I know that there's thirty of those. We are proposing a new statistics class for mathematics. We are also proposing a math teacher to teach a six block, so we would be able to offer another AP rigorous math class. And then here comes the big one, we haven't been big already. So now we have band and music. And in music education, our band numbers keep increasing. And we've, you know, due to enrollment, we're going to need new chairs. Fifteen new chairs, we're expecting at least fifteen more students in band. Phil and Jill say that we've outlived our locker spaces. We don't really have enough locker spaces, so they've, they've come to, they found these altar band lockers that you can store instruments in. And so we would be able to have enough lockers. It would store eighty-five pieces of equipment and instruments in these lockers. And right now, we don't have the storage space. And, you know, if, if students leave their instruments here, we have thirty-nine cubbies. And we do lock instruments in a big room. But, you know, if someone needs to go get their instru, you know, the teacher has to go get the instrument, and then there is still a risk, you know, because who's going to let the student in to, to get it? So it's, you know, it's really for them to be secure. And again, it's, it's a big-ticketed item.
Have ever, just out of curiosity, have there, has the instrument ever been stolen?
I don't know the answer to that. I, I'm going to say, I have not received, if something was stolen, we would do something called Ed three seventeen four, and we would, you know, give it to our SRO and, but I don't, I, I don't know. It's, since I've been here, I can't think of an instrument being stolen. But I know that with the increased numbers in band, it's something that they, they really want to have, you know, a better system, and that's, and so I was very worried about that number. But when I talked to Frank, he said, go ahead and put it in, and, you know, put it out there.
Hi, Frank.
And, and, you know, it might.
That's why I purpose my comments.
It might not happen, but, you know, you know, we were, we were told, like, just, you know, get it out there. So that's what we did.
So where would they put these lockers?
In the band room, they, they have, they have it, I think the best thing to do, John, is, is to walk down there, and they would show you our current storage and the design and what they would like it to look like.
So they have the room to install these?
Yes. They've done a lot of work on this, but it's like, it's a lot, it's a lot. They're, they're also asking to replace, you know, furniture. Conductor stand is broken, so they need a conductor stand.
Do you know, I was trying to go to John one second earlier. I know there's a Friends of Music, any idea what their budget is? Like, could they even afford something that big?
They, the Friends of Music have, they've raised a lot of money here, but they have given so much to CHS, like, you know, like the sound barriers. They, they paid for all of that. They, they, they fundraise all the time, and, and they give every, every dime of it back to, to CHS. We are very blessed to have a high-quality music department. When you come to any of our concerts, when you think of this school as five hundred and fifteen kids, and we're putting on concerts that are, you know, almost equal to, to, you know, Nashua South. I mean, it's, it's phenomenal what they do here. Okay, then, you know, under Science, this is just a wishlist thing, so it's not budgeted. But it's just to let everyone know that the CF, Kate Devine, would really like to have new biology books that are updated. She's not in budget, we did not put that in. But I did tell her that I would let everyone know that she would really like to have new biology books. And under Julie Heons, we are going to be asking for, we, we remember, we changed Science. We went from Earth Science and Physical Science to one science teacher and one science program. So freshman year, they don't go half-year to this teacher and half-year to that. We have it as a freshman science course. Mr. Pothier, who we hired, I just want to give a plug out to him. He's retired out of Massachusetts. He's a phenomenal gifted teacher. I got to do an observation on him the other day. And we really are, are, you know, we're very lucky to have such a talented teacher. And he's, you know, loving it here, so that's all good.
Under Science, what is the Doc three and Doc four?
Depth of Knowledge.
Okay.
Depth of Knowledge. So, you know, like, when you look at, like, you know, DOK one, that would be like, you know, draw, label, recognize. DOK two would be going a little deeper, like, cause and effect. But DOK three would be, you know, now we're going to revise, we're, we're going to solve. And then, DOK four would be like, design, critique. So it's, it's just, so we've, we've spent some time in, in our quality assessments, and, you know, our, our teachers are, are looking to design lessons and classes that, that go into DOK three and four versus, you know, label.
Yeah.
And then Guidance Services, Jody, do you want to, do you want to tape this, just for your little practice thing?
I did this probably in my sleep, I'm not even sure. One of the programs that a few of our students are able to access is YES, which, they're fantastic, yes, program. Kind of like our little social service for our at-risk students. They are able to make those family connections in the community for our at-risk students. And just based on the way that our society moves on, we tend to have more and more at-risk students and more needs for those types of services. So that YES program, there you'd see an increase of over six thousand dollars for that. Also, an increase of fifteen hundred dollars in tutoring would be that we have, we're actually up over sixty as of today, 504 plans in our building. Where last year I had forty-seven. So we're increased by fourteen students with 504 plans already this year. I've requested tutoring for students with, multiple students with concussions. Seems to be seeing more and more concussions now, now that we're more in tune with those physical needs of our athletes and students. So we have more concussions, we had mono, we have some long-term illnesses that have required. And then we're only into mid-October. So, knowing that we have that many more students, not only in 504 plans, but really other needs in general, we're looking at increase of fifteen hundred. Additionally, in that money, if I, if I recall correctly, there's also a need often for our vocational students, is that also in that line, Lori? Where we have to provide them with independent study instruction because they are unable to get required classes into their schedules during the day.
One required class.
So every year, it seems to be a different class. Last year, our juniors were unable to get world social studies in, world studies, thank you. World Studies, I'm looking at Nate, because I just talked to him about this. This year, it seems that our juniors are unable to get a math class in, which is not the best. It's just luck of the draw and where the vocational classes fall. So that additional money would, would be.
This is, this is one line that, that, you know, I think is, is more than justified. As we're working hard to keep more and more of our students here, and just special education students in service, students who are ill, students who are on 504, the need for these services, while there's, there's some randomness and ad hocness to it, the general trend is going up, and it's, it's going to go up more. So, you know, I think that much at least is, is required, the tutoring piece. If you look down to tuition, line five sixty-one, based on the last paperwork that Bill Hooks put in front of me to sign, we're having a very good year this year in terms of reducing the number of students who are attending London area Nashua Night School. I think the last number that Bill told me was two in London area.
Yeah.
Which is down from six or eight last year.
We were at sixteen, I think, the first year that we hired Bill here. Right, we were at sixteen, I think, the first year that we hired Bill here, uh, I think in two thousand and six, we had nineteen dropouts at Campbell High School, we had twenty-five kids right behind them, and, uh, we had a number of kids that had huge credit deficits. Um, what we'd like to continue to do, and that's why, uh, Jody, you know, is looking for, you know, alternative resources through, through APACs is, you know, the YES program would be another resource that might be able to have a student graduate from Campbell High School, 'cause ultimately that's been our goal, you know, multiple pathways, but if we can have them stay and graduate from Campbell, that's what we'd really like to do.
That's right. That's it in the guidance area.
And, um, and then there was an increase in, in library services. This, um, again, our librarian asked for this, she, uh, was the, uh, chair for librarians throughout New Hampshire, and one of the things that a lot of schools have gone to is this plagiarism software, and, um, you know, it, it, it checks for plagiarism in, in writing, so, uh, again, um, it's something that she's requested, and-
Yeah, well, that's the turn it in.
Great, it's called-
Yeah, which is a lot of colleges are using that as well.
And it's what a lot of colleges are using.
Is that annual fee, or is that, you buy it once in?
You buy it once, I think it is.
No, it's an annual subscription.
Oh, it is an annual subscription, okay.
Turn it in was, do you remember when I did the presentation on the, the vision of technology?
Used in colleges.
And there was a, a website, you could turn it in and get a report, color-coded report showing, you know, uh, if it was a quote, it would show it. Almost, I would say, gosh, three-quarters of universities use it, um, and I would say the majority of those absolutely require it. If you're, if you're really gonna prepare kids to write well in freshman university, it's a great tool, um, because if they're gonna go, if they're going to try and get away as a, as a junior or senior with paraphrasing and changing a verb or a noun here and there, and expect that they're gonna get a good grade for it, they're gonna get killed at, at college, quite honestly. So it, it is, I'm pretty sure that's a, an annual subscription, um, but if, if used well, it can be a really great tool in helping kids develop their writing skills, that'll really help them when they get to, um, more selective and highly selective colleges. They'd be at a serious disadvantage. Mr. Cooper, I see you're nodding your heads up and down, can you, did you wanna expand on a little bit?
Yeah, I certainly have used it when I was, um, in college, and I, I, I see value in it and, and allowing the, you know, the staff have access to that, have the students turn in, in their assignments there. Help is a preventative measure.
So while it's actually in the library budget, I, I'm expecting the humanities teachers would be the people who would be the, the greatest beneficiaries of this?
So what do you do? You, you basically, I turn the paper and you send it through that software?
The teach, the student submits it into, uh, into the turn-it-in software, and that, it would produce a report that gives a percentage likelihood that parts of the paper are in fact plagiarized.
And it goes back to the student to fix it?
I believe the student gets a report, uh, as well, yeah, so it gets, it gets-
The student can, can run it through the system by itself?
Yes.
Or when they submit it, it gets run automatic through the system and to the, to the teacher. And so as we're implementing a new SIS system, all of these things start to dovetail together. You've got electronic submission, if you've got teachers who can, you know, pull their stylus out and write with digital ink, then, and the, and the teacher gets the report. And it's a real, it, it's not just a grading tool, it's a teaching tool.
Right, 'cause I think it's good too when it's, um, unintentional plagiarism, so there's certainly times where students are plagiarizing, and it's certainly unintentional, we go over that, and in those cases, I think too, this would give them the opportunity before the rubber meets the road, and they turn it in, uh, it gives them the opportunity to at least see that too.
And there are times that you're asking students just to go somewhere and summarize something, and they need to know that, that in some cases, this particular type of writing, you're gonna get a different score by the system, it's gonna look, it's gonna come up with a high number in terms of, of, uh, it coming across like it might be plagiarism, but if it's a summary, so you're really giving kids expectations about what does good writing look like in this context versus that context? Uh, and the ability to write well and the ability to do math are the two biggest predictors of, of college success, so, to me, it's a good investment.
And then, um, administrative overtime, uh, this is, this is an area that has been cut, um, but in, in the Campbell High School, um, main office, we have a two-point-five, um, my administrative assistant, you know, with all the co-curriculars, all the athletics, doing the budget, uh, then, you know, um, they, they're just really, they're stretched. We have a lot of, you know, activities that we do at the high school, including graduation, all A's, that-
Lori, did you say two-point-five?
Uh, two thousand five hundred is what we, we asked for.
Okay.
So that's an increase in overtime.
All right, sorry, no, I thought you were talking about staff.
Two-point, yeah, two-point-five.
Yes, yeah, two-point-five. We have Patty Wagner, who's-
It's greater than that.
Yeah.
I think, I think she's actually-
Well, she-
I think if you look it up, she's twenty-seven half-hours a week.
Yeah.
Okay, so she's a little bit more than point-five. But, uh, and then, you know, with, uh, you know, we, you know, we are the receptionist for, uh, for the high school and for the SAU, uh, then we do answer, they answer the door all the time, you know, so it's really, it's, it's a really busy school, and, uh, I don't think they abuse the overtime at all. Uh, I think they work very, very hard, and-
So on average, how many, uh, wait, I guess, I guess how many, uh, people come into the school that aren't students, that you guys have to process on a daily basis?
We, we could get you that number, I think it would be more than you think, because we have, you know, um, special ed meetings, we have 504 meetings, we, we have parents who are coming in to meet with teach, we have a sign-in book, so we could definitely, you know, we have vendors, it's, it's a lot more than I think people realize. It's, it's a really busy, busy school.
I, I guess just grab a snapshot of a week, I think, you know, I think one week would be-
Yeah, I'll grab a snapshot, I'll have Patty Wagner.
The same as another week, and just let us know with that.
And quite honestly, I, I know, when I see the pace that Patty works at, and, and you can agree or disagree, but, I mean, that piece is a pretty small part of what she does in her seven-and-a-half-hour day. She's a very active and very productive member of, of the office staff, um, and, uh, has a, has a great, great range and set of skills. So she, while she does do that, she's, she's doing it while she's doing at least one and usually a couple of other things at the same time.
Just the same Patty Wagner who's worked at that LMS?
That, the same Patty Wagner who's here on that.
Okay, I just wanna go back to something really quickly, just so, so you know how I came to the, um, going back to supplies. If you, if you look at, um, supplies from last year, I, um, our numbers were almost the same. Uh, we added the two-point-one, that's where we got the thirteen-nine. Um, we had a reduction of three thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents, that was, uh, at the superintendent's level. So we, we actually, if you look, we use the exact numbers except for we put the two-point-one percent in, and so if you took, you know, the twenty-seven thousand five hundred fifty-four, then you did the two percent, that would be five fifty-one, that's how we got to the twenty, I just want you to know how we got there, so to the twenty-eight.
No, no, all I'm saying is, what the Budget Committee will do, will look at what was actually spent in two thousand and fourteen, which is eighteen thousand seven hundred. So if you look at, at, from that to this year, so if the last two actual years spent were thirteen-seven and eighteen-seven, and it jumped to twenty-eight-seven, is a ten-thousand-dollar increase on an eighteen-thousand-dollar, so you had-
Yeah, we had a four thousand.
Twenty thousand dollars, twenty thousand two hundred and thirty-eight, and you only spent eighteen-seven, so you had over, you know, uh, had more money to spend there, didn't spend it, and now you're asking for a ten percent increase, is it, that, when you follow, 'cause you know they're gonna run this on three-year averages.
I understand, I just wanted to know how I came up with it, and I came up with it based on past practice, so I, that's all, I, 'cause I just couldn't understand how I, I did it myself until you asked me. That wasn't so bad, was it?
No.
Depends on which side of the envelope you're coming from. I, 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 I mean, you go to the bottom line, and you look at the, at the bottom line, you looked at it, two hundred, in two thousand and fourteen, your actual expenditures were two hundred and eighty, I'll just round, two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. This year, the, the, uh, the budget gives you three hundred and eleven thousand dollars, which is an increase of about twenty-six thousand dollars, um, actually a little more than that, but almost thirty thousand dollars. Um, and then this year, you, you, you've asked for a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar increase, um, which is a third of what your budget would've been, actually more than a third. Um, I, I think that the, uh, I think the pencil needs to be a little sharper on the CHS budget.
It's about a hundred and, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than you've ever spent in a single year on this stuff in the past.
I mean, I think that, I, I, I mean, I, I guess the key is that items that shouldn't be here shouldn't be here.
That's a big chunk, that's a big chunk of it.
And, so it makes it hard for us to judge the budget, because line items aren't where they're supposed to be, and, and hopefully it can get corrected like, like the items that we saw, um, last week. This week when we go in and take a look at them, they're, they're, they're accurate to where they should be, and, and hopefully we get that done, and so the board can go in and start looking at, you know, realistic CHS, um, budget.
The high school budget is always much, much larger than the others, and, and this is three times that I've seen Lori be able to come here and talk in detail about conversations with teachers and rationale that are at a very deep level, and, and, uh, it is a, a challenging task, um, 'cause it is such a broad and, and deep, uh, budget. And we're still, I think, in the high school budget, in the, in the situation where we're reacting to stuff that wasn't funded three or four years ago, so it comes across as a lot more ad hoc, where the other two budgets, it's like, here's where we are, we got this done, where it's in place, and we're still trying to get the high school budget leveled out, you know? Um, we have had some issues, uh, I know you and I talked about, about, uh, gosh, maybe the first week of school, about the need for the, the French textbooks, that in fact, um, new teacher, Mary Kane, very different approach, who seems to be having a great deal of success, being very well-received, and really wanting to spend the money to support that program and grow that program back, you know, into a, into a full, you know, French one-two-three-four, as opposed to this year, we have a French one, a French two, and a three-four combined.
Right.
And this is the first time that our French enrollments have been this low, and I think with the, the addition of the, uh, Spanish person at the, uh, the middle school, who's gonna do a really nice job there, and who is, who did Karen?
The, ours-
Who's teaching the AP Spanish?
We have Heather Davis.
Heather Davis, I think.
Heather Davis is doing a wonderful job. The other, the other thing, John, is, you know, science, you know, we have the new, uh, department head from Los Angeles, you know, she, she just has, she is so passionate, and she's gone to, you know, a three-to-five-year plan, I mean, she really wants it all. I mean, she really wants every bit of it, because she's so passionate about, first of all, getting things that are outdated gone, getting new equipment in, and then being able to be twenty-first century in science, and, and that's, it all costs money.
I, I think the challenge is gonna be, and you folks have been through Budget Committee meetings, you know, more than I have, I've only been through it twice, but I think the challenge will be, you know, the Budget Committee members will, will come in with, and, and look at, you know, from the, from the two thousand and fourteen actual to this year, is a difference of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars and a forty-five percent, almost a fifty percent increase in the budget. And there may be a tendency to skip the line by line and just say, "The most you've ever spent on the chart is two hundred and ninety-five dollars, that's two hundred and ninety-five thousand, let's give you ten percent more, done, you figure it out." And, and that's, that's the fear with a jump this big. Um, but as I say, I, I, I think, uh, you've shown great knowledge of the budget, and I think some of this will go down when we get the, the, the four-fifty-one line straightened out. Um, and there's some of this here that is absolutely needed, and, and in fact, are, you know, probably some, some more areas. But it does also reflect the fact that we have a much broader range of kids in high schools than we used to have ten years ago. We have a lot of needs and a lot of kids. We're a small high school who tries to do a very good job with all levels of kids, and it's, it's not cheap to do it well, and I think we do do it, uh, quite well, and we're getting better at it. So I think that's the strength of the argument moving forward, that, that, you know, we are getting results, we are keeping kids in district, we are showing, you know, more kids in AP classes, and, and AP, and those kids doing better than ever, even though you're less selective in terms of who's there. SAT is creeping up, you know, kneecap scores are coming up, and, and you're, you know, the priorities of, of writing and things like that just seem to be smack-on with, with that goal of, of success for all kids.
And Jody and I did meet with Philip Bradley today, you know, from the International High School, who came here from New Zealand. He's very excited about the quality of education that we have here at, at Campbell High School. So we do a lot, I mean, thank, thank goodness that, you know, people support education in this town and, and give us what we have. Uh, he spent, um, you know, most of the day here, looking at curriculum, looking at, uh, you know, our school, so he could recommend our school. If, you know, even students would come here for a year, uh, every student that would come would pay tuition, which would be thirteen thousand dollars a year, plus they would also pay the families that they were, they're, they're living with. And I think that, you know, is what we're hoping, so we can offset some of these costs, we can, you know, try to, try to give back, so we can, you know, 'cause we, we, we understand that we, we ask for a lot at the high school, we do understand that. Any more outs? Okay, thank you.
Good job. Thank you, Lori.
She doesn't know this.
Nope.
That's not hers.
Yeah, Jody gets three credits tonight.
Uh, that was in response to a query from Mr. Burke.
Yeah, sure.
We can discuss it.
No, that's fine, those were the numbers.
It'll, it'll come up.
That's fine.
We'll ask some questions, but, but, interesting observations.
Do you wanna touch on an hour, or you wanna wait till?
I, I find it interesting that, if you look at the numbers, you have thirty students enrolled in web design, and it drops all the way to six for advanced web design.
I'm sorry?
You have thirty kids that enroll in web design-
Right.
And then advanced web design, you only get six of those kids that continue on. Same thing in computer programming, twenty-four kids, and only six continue on. Wow, the obvious question is why?
Well, and the other thing, I, I mentioned in the email, if we get that K to eight portfolio done, every kid who has a passing portfolio doesn't have to take the basic computer apps class, so that's more capacity, but yes, in terms of the, of the retention of students from introductory courses to advanced courses-
Yeah.
It is relatively low.
Yeah, and you have thirty-nine students in multimedia, thirty in web design, forty-five in digital publishing, there's obviously an interest there, it's just they're not, it's not being captured, unfortunately.
But in terms of, if you, if you look at that, uh, report, so this is from fourteen-fifteen, I asked me to, I asked Jody to send me the actual, uh, raw numbers from the original request, and if you look at computer apps, a hundred and sixty-three, so it's basically every student who's a freshman and anybody who failed it from the prior year. So with a hundred and forty freshmen, that's about twenty-three additional students, uh, multimedia and so on. If you look at facts, um, very well-subscribed, and, and in fact, originally, remember we're in a default budget, so originally, uh, we're, they were requesting a six block in computer education, in facts, and also in physical education. Now, as it turns out, if you look at the relationships course at the very bottom, um, that's actually a fax, uh, course, it's not a phys ed course. And if, if you look at the requests, Shannon Zypan would've gotten, uh, two, four, five, and get the six block. Mr. Patterson's contract recalls for him to teach one-point-zero credits, and he does one-point- Mr. Patterson's contract recalls for him to teach 1.0 credits and he does 1.5. And the new person would have been at 1, 2, 3, plus the fax course being taught by them for 4. So there really were only requests for a halftime position. And that's with the new person teaching, well, the 4.0 is with them teaching a fax course and they're not fax certified and teaching half-credit class with seven students in it. So I wasn't able to find the numbers to justify. But I recognize the concern that as long as that's a halftime position, you're going to have rolling.
What's fit for life?
That is the grade 10. One, a half-credit in health is required across high school and a full credit or two half-credits in physical education. So PE 9 is a mandatory phys ed class in 9. And I think fit for life is the other basic mandatory one. But I think we allow them to opt out of fit for life as long as they're taking another half-credit phys ed.
Can we walk while rad or strength training?
Does that sound right? We do what a lot of, almost all high schools do. The grade 9 year is very.
Programed?
With a few, maybe a couple of half-credit electives. And then as you go further in the program, you have more and more opportunities to do it. That was the information that I had, based on the total number of requests. Now, it may be, for example, that no freshmen were allowed to request any other phys ed courses because they're already in a half.
Yeah.
You know, so when they go in and log in and request their courses, there are some things that may not show up. But it would appear that sophomores, juniors, and seniors were allowed to because we have only 56, 40, sorry, 49 in fit for life. And they all have to be in something, so.
How big can those go, the gym classes? Can they go to like 30 or so?
I'm sorry?
How high can the PE classes go? Can they go to 30?
Jody would know because she can tell you what the courses are, each of the courses are capped at. It's not unusual for phys ed courses to be capped higher than any other course because you have a bigger space. And, I mean, I know, well, if you look at the numbers there, you've got one section, what do we have, one section of?
Just one of 20, a couple, yeah.
One of strength. Yeah, 224. In Nashua, phys ed was capped at 40. I've taught phys ed classes of 35 before in a half a gym.
That's a lot of kids.
You want to be on your toes. So there is that.
You're ruining your average, Brian.
What's that?
You're ruining your average meeting time.
Should put CHS off until next week. All right. That brings us to school board member replacement. What discussion we want to have with this.
Did you want me to backfill my conversation with Gordon?
Sure.
Okay. I contacted Gordon to check and make sure, in anticipation of my meeting with Mr. Burke Thursday morning, I contacted Gordon, asked him if I was interpreting the RSA correctly. And it was, the requirement is a majority vote only, not unanimous. And I asked him about, you know, the procedure. And he said that it is absolutely as open as it seems. That in fact, the board can pretty much do what it would like in terms of a process for filling. Given that that wasn't especially helpful, I asked him what his recommendation was. And his recommendation was, he said, think of where you are in the school year. It's the start of October. You're going to be doing almost nothing but budget between now, budget and warrant articles going into the March 10 election. So he suggested that it's very helpful to have somebody with municipal experience. Former board member would be a good choice. And his comment was that, all things being equal, the board will be seen to be, the board, if it has the option, might consider picking somebody who meets those criteria, who's not looking to run for the position in March. Because if they pick someone who is running, they might be perceived to be giving someone an advantage in the upcoming election. So those were his two criteria. Somebody who can come in and actually, you know, be helpful in the budget process moving forward. So knowledge of budget, budget committee or school board. And the perception of fairness in this was, he felt an important consideration that the board needs to take in. And then his indication was, you don't have to call for nominations. You don't have to do anything. You can go and get someone if you want. That is completely your choice. But that within, if it's not filled within 45 days, it goes to the board of selection. And he suggested that that's probably not someplace that we want to go. So that's all the insight I have on that.
So with that being said, like I said, Ralph Bowen has already said he had an interest, who has served on the school board in the past. Jason, his voice is interest to me also. He had an interest, also served on the school board for three years. But I guess the question is, do we want the individuals who have an interest to come in and speak?
So who do we have altogether? We had.
Ralph Bowen, that's the approach that sent me in the email. And also Jason.
Okay.
And I think Mary Prindle is also, she reached out to me and said she'd be interested in.
And you forward that information to the board as an FYI.
Who also has school board experience.
I might suggest from my past experience that if, you know, folks are submitting, that the board consider some sort of solicitation of interest to individuals to submit to the superintendent and put a time period. That's what we did in previous, in that way there. It's not just people that may know. In this way here, you're putting a website. You have a timeframe to which you end it. And then the board needs to determine how you want to move forward with those individuals that express interest in the position.
So yeah, it's really, there's two parts. What do you want to do procedurally? And then perhaps some conversation about what the criteria will be in making a determination. But in the end, whoever the successful member is, if there is one, will need to have three votes.
I'm sorry, Frank, so you're suggesting that these three individuals notify the superintendent?
You have three people that have just taken upon themselves to submit a letter of interest. And what I would suggest that you do is have a time period over the next two weeks. Anyone interested, put the word out to a notice, some sort of notice in the board, that if you are interested in serving in this position, almost like advertisement for an opening in the district, that they submit a letter of interest to the superintendent. So that way, you just put the word out. It's not just those individuals that have taken it upon themselves. But now you're soliciting, anyone interested, please submit that.
Since, if you decide to do that, you should probably ask them actually to send it to Michelle because she's the board secretary.
Yeah, whoever to send it to. My point is that you need to kind of formalize that. It's just not a couple of individuals. Not only to respect those people, but you need to kind of solicit. If that's what you want to do, solicit interest, interest candidates, you should put that up.
And you have a suggestion how you would solicit that?
Yeah, we just put a couple of things in the website and maybe the, you know, again, you got to make it a short period of time because your window is, every day is closing on this. Because of the IRS issue.
Can we use like alert now or anything to do it?
I mean, you can almost put it out tonight, your vote to move forward with that so it gets out that way. And then we can put, we can just make something up for agree, solicit of.
When you've done this in the past, did you have them come and, you know, speak about why they wanted to?
Every time. Every time. We replaced in the three districts, I want to say, four board members prior to their expiration of their term. And they all came in, they had a public, they all came in and kind of just had some questions for them and allowed them to give an opportunity to speak on their behalf and then.
I'm assuming public process?
Yeah. The budget committee did it a couple of years ago when someone left. And I actually volunteered. And basically, there was only two of us that volunteered. Same thing, they all sat here, we came up, gave just a 30-second intro to ourselves. Then they might have a couple of board members asked questions and then they voted right down there.
I'm just wondering what the best way is to advertise it though, you know. And I think.
Is it too late to get something in? Usually Tuesdays is the deadline for like letters, but I don't know if you can get an advertisement in or not.
Went to print today.
Oh, went to, okay, so yeah, it's not getting today.
So I'm wondering what other vehicle we could use because I think almost that, a week from now.
I'm just thinking it should be next Wednesday, yeah.
I mean, the applicants should be in by next Wednesday, then the following one. You mean before next Wednesday?
I mean, there's time to be on the waste. Why not have them apply for next Wednesday, buy next Wednesday and come in next Wednesday? We can vote next Wednesday.
So then the question is, what's the best means of advertising that?
Can we use the alert now system to get it up? And that's probably, that's going to hit 800 families, right? Posting the boards, posting on Facebook.
On the school websites.
On the school website.
Plus it'll be in the minutes.
How many do you get it out? Proactively, you're soliciting, expressions of interest.
Off Town Hall.
Post at Town Hall.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, well.
They may even be able to put it on their board, their two board, school board openings.
Yeah.
But it's up to you, you're soliciting.
So when should they get the superintendent by then? If we want them here next Wednesday?
Well, I think you need to set the meeting for 5:30. You know, start our meeting at 5:30 and have it done by 6:30.
This part of it.
And then vote so the person can get sworn in. And put the body in the hot seat next Wednesday.
Do we have a JP that has to do it?
We have to have our. Can you swear yourself in?
If Mr. Garrett were to be chosen, we would have no school district clerk to swear him in. So I guess I would have to swear him in.
Oh, we'd have to figure across that break.
You would have to vacate his position formally. So he may not be sitting on the board until the following Wednesday.
Where he can't hold two, those two positions?
No.
Oh, really? So if he got nominated, he'd have to resign. And there wasn't a statute for filling that position.
You're not going to find anybody that wants it.
We nominated Michelle.
We'll have to point Michelle back into that position.
It just goes back to me again.
But you weren't, but you weren't the person, there was a.
No, we could ask.
So do you want to have nominations by 5:00 PM on Tuesday? And then make appointments?
If everybody can make it by 5:30. I mean, everybody needs to check their schedule. Because, you know, if our meeting, we don't want to do this in our meeting time with budgets. We want to do it beforehand so that.
You think we'll need an hour?
Well, if you have five people, you're going to, just give them 10 minutes, you could take an hour. And we have to have a discussion. I mean, I just really, I mean, you have four people right now. Right, three people, four people.
An hour is not much time.
It's not. Well, I mean, I mean, you just, you know, they come in, they give a one or two-minute speech. We, you know, everybody has their one or two questions they want answered and hope keep the answers brief and to the point. And then you vote and hope that not all votes are 2-2.
All you need is one. It's not 2-2.
That's true.
Okay, so the board wants something up on the website by tomorrow.
So the website in Town Hall, yeah. And so they have to notify the superintendent by Friday?
Or Michelle by Friday. No, Michelle by Tuesday.
By Tuesday?
5:00 PM Tuesday?
Yeah. And then they have to be available Wednesday.
I mean, you need to have all that out. But I don't think you give them until Tuesday at 5:00. And people who are going to be interested in this thing, you tell them Monday at 5:00 just so that we have a day that you guys can send out the list and stuff to the people that we know who it is. We shouldn't be walking in Wednesday morning to it.
I'm guessing you have three and it'll remain three.
I mean, I mean, look, I mean, if our criteria is an experienced school board, that leaves Trish, that leaves Cindy Kuchar, and that leaves Dot of all the school board members that I can remember in the last six years, five years, five and a half years that have been on the board. Because the other three have already said their interest. So anybody else in that would be nine years or longer before they were on the board.
I mean, it doesn't mean you can't consider someone. It's just that, given the task and the timelines, I mean, it's, you know.
I think that's what we'd be looking for, someone with experience, preferably. Anything else?
Litchfield Rec, Farm Facilities request.
This is, this has come forward as of yesterday. It's brought to our attention that the rec department in past practice has requested and been given the authority to utilize the LMS gym. Their request right now is to start this coming Saturday, every Saturday and Sunday through March of 2015, including Christmas weekend, that they would have the gym available to them from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, which would be a period of 12 hours each day, 24 hours. And given all of the changes and the access controls, typically they provided, as my understanding is, in meeting with Dave Ross and Matt and talking with Tom as well, is that they basically were given a key and said, here you go, here's the gym. Given the board's policy, given the access controls that we've put in place over the summer, we really need some direction from the board in how to handle this. Because again, the board policy as an overview is that any outside group using the school facility, that facility will be unlocked, unlocked, and supervised by a custodian of the district. So we're in a little bit of a dilemma, if you will, based on what has happened in the past and now that we have all the protocol and procedures put in place to provide. My understanding is, they do not schedule games during that time. They just have the gym available and they put the word out to coaches, if you want to use the LMS gym, it's available during this time and it's open and they can just kind of show up. And so we haven't had the chance to chat with the rec department because this request just came in, I believe, yesterday. So it was just put on my table and I thought we'd bring it to you folks for some direction before we approached the rec department.
Maybe what I do is notify them as far as what our procedures are now and see if we can narrow down like how much time they need and if we can narrow down hours of time, space.
My recommendation would be that we compromise a little bit here, given the timeline. I still think we need to have some control over the facility relative to a custodian coming in and unlocking it for them. I don't feel comfortable nor do the access control matrices that we, matrix that we've had you folks doing a second reading tonight provide for that. So I think there has to be some common ground, understanding that, you know, the building must be, has to be supervised by the board policy. That, you know, in an emergency or something, there has to be a custodian on scene. So maybe we can chat with them a little bit and find some common ground with them. And what the understanding is, you know, maybe we find some common ground, some ability to look at this season, then next year, you know. I think the schedule, if they were paying for a custodian, or that's going to be the case, that they were paying for a custodian, I think we would find that the scheduled request of 12 hours each day would be a little bit different than maybe it is today.
I think the 12 hours a day is kind of a bit much. But at the same time, it's the community schools and this is, I'm assuming it's for rec basketball. There's literally no other place for them. There's Town Hall where you can't, Town Hall can't fit all the rec teams.
GMS too.
So, yeah, which is the same problem though, I guess. I mean, we're going to have to give one of the schools.
Because GMS has basketball league there on Saturday. The school policy is pretty.
Straightforward.
Straightforward here. They get access to the schools from, and it's our job to make it work. It's not their job to make it work.
Yeah, the only good news is we've been violating our own policy for years. So it's not a change. But if, if nothing else, the liability piece, and given that our policy, and I'm going to defer to the more qualified. the more qualified person to my left, but given that our policy says we're supposed to have people there, if anything ever happened, from a liability perspective, we're violating our own policy, which puts us in a worse position than a normal accident. And that's, that's my concern.
Maybe you change your policy then.
No, that's a prime X thing that you're changing your policy for. I don't know if you could do that.
I, I would, I would.
Basically, you're going to end up hiring a part-time person for twenty-four hours.
Why don't you make exceptions to bringing people in this building unsupervised?
So, what's the?
Is there no one here on Saturdays for maintenance?
So, what's the?
There's all kinds of people in the building wandering around, according to reports, but nobody's supervising.
What can, what can be done at LMS on Saturday and Sunday if we put in place a custodian?
More information, one of our existing custodians, you mean?
Or, or new custodian.
Existing custodian, you lose a custodian during the, the weekday for, I mean, you're looking at twenty-four hours. So, that's not feasible from the standpoint of still being able to clean the building during the weekday. Can we bring in a part-time custodian to cover weekends? Sure we can. Then it comes to question of how you pay for it this year. We can put it into the budget next year.
Well, I mean, that's, that's, I mean.
Well, and the piece in the middle is, do you change the policy and say, people use the building at their own risk, and they sign a waiver, and then the waiver's no good if we're.
It, it's not just about liability. I mean, you talk to the custodians, and over the years, they've had experience in this. It's just the reality of the situation is they come in Monday morning, they find things in the gym not done properly, things, you know, a shower left on, you know, there's, there's, again, there's just certain things that you.
I mean, we basically, we lock them out of, of the school. They can't go down the hallway because there's something, and they can't get into the cafeteria. So, they're, they are controlled in that, but at the same time.
Still in the building.
I understand in the building, but, but the other thing is they have to be able to, you know, they were unlocking the doors, you know, and whether or not the key, whether or not the, the pass thing that they have would do that. But, but they, the policy says that if you're a, a District entity, and you request to use the, I mean, I can't get access to the Internet, I'd pull it up on the policies. But if you ask to get it and you have more than fifty percent, there's, there's no charge.
There's a waiver of the rental fee. There's a waiver of the rental fee, but then your policy further, you're going to take it further. There's a waiver of the rental fee, but then it says that, that anyone using, from outside group using a school facility must be unlocked, blocked, and supervised by a custodian. So, the District has a decision that based on your policy, if you run over that policy, you don't want to charge the group. It doesn't say that you won't charge them for the custodian, it says that you, they, they're not charged for the use of the facility. That means a facility use charge.
You're looking at about two hundred bucks a day?
That's why I'm saying, you probably narrow them down and limit how many hours, especially if you tell them they're going to pay for custodian. I'm certain they'll minimize the hour window that they're going to use the facility.
But I mean, even if they do, the, the fact about it, you know, let's say they narrow it down to eight hours or ten hours, they're still looking at, you know, a hundred, let's say we hire somebody at fourteen dollars an hour, which I believe is, I don't know if that's.
The custodian charges twelve dollars an hour.
How much?
By your approved fees.
Thirty dollars?
I believe it's thirty.
So, at eight hours, that's two hundred and forty bucks. That's five hundred bucks a weekend.
Well, do we know how much use they use in the past as far as on a weekend?
I don't, I don't have a, I understand it, my understanding is, it's not scheduled that the, the coaches and the Rec.
Well, it is scheduled because they have games on the weekends.
The coaches from the Rec Department have told that, other than the games, which is not twelve hours for two days every weekend, that the gym is available to them if they want to have a practice for their team. So, it could be, they just kind of show up. That's the way it was explained to me. I don't have any personal firsthand experience with it.
Somebody needs to have a conversation with the Rec Department. And I don't know if it's, if it's, if it's you or if it's David Ross or, or somebody needs to get a better.
At our level, it's.
Then I think then, we either invite the Rec Committee to come in and try to give us a better understanding, or you guys work it and bring us back a better understanding and, and let them know what, what our costs are and, and, you know.
I wonder if other people are using sort of designated volunteers. So, here's a person who's in, who's in charge of it during this time. They have to know who's coming, who's going, they have, people have to sign the liability waiver and yada, yada, yada. So, here's the protocols, boom, 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 boom. So, you've got three people from the Rec Department, one of whom has to be there, and we approve it in our policy in, in that way. And it gives the access and it gives more control.
And we don't want to be charging thirty, we, we don't want to be charging two hundred and forty bucks to the basketball leagues for one day.
The season fee's probably fifty bucks, it's not going to cover it.
Yeah. But at the same time, I agree, we, you know, the idea of just having a runaround.